I would like to call this study session for the Lakewood City Council on Monday, August 12th. Order, first item for discussion, we have Mr. Chris Baca, Chief Deputy City Attorney at the City of Tacoma, to discuss the Click Network and give us an update.
Good evening and thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you tonight.
You know, our own staff goes at the end of the agenda, so you're really privileged.
I was on a conference call with Representatives of Rainier Connect and the City of Lakewood staff. And we were on the call to talk about potential transfer of the Click franchise to Rainier Connect. And it came up that there really wasn't a lot of information provided about what is going on with Click Network. And I know they have a presence in Lakewood. They're not, they don't provide services throughout the entire city, but a good portion of it. And so it made sense for us to come down here and provide information to you, answer any questions that you might have. So I've got a little bit of a presentation to provide some background for those of you that don't know how Click came about. And then I'll turn it over to Rainier Connect to talk about what the potential transfer would look like of services from the Click Network to Rainier Connect. And talk a little bit about the franchise transfer application that will be filed and processed here in the City of Lakewood, as well as City of Furcrest and City of University Place. So the reason I'm here is because I've been involved in this project for the last couple of years and no one else drew the straw. So I'll start by talking a little bit about how Click began, so that you have sort of that background in mind. Click is really a trade name for a business unit of Tacoma Power. They operate the Click Commercial Network. And the Click Commercial Network came about in the mid-1990s. And when Tacoma Power, like a lot of other electric utilities, saw that there was emerging infrastructure needs for communications networks and their power facilities. And as they looked at that, they also looked at the possibility of remote meter reading through data connections, hardline, wireline data connections. And so they embarked upon the construction of a communications network. It was preceded by litigation in the court to make sure that the power utility and the city in general had the authority to actually construct a communication network. And ancillary to that business, provide additional services to the public by way of cable television programming. And back at that time, broadband was unheard of. There was this thing called the Internet, but it wasn't really a real service until right about that timeframe. It was primarily something that universities and the military were using. And it was then known as cable modem service, because it was provided to your cable modems. And if you're on Quest or now CenturyLink, it's a dial, it was a dial-up service, right? And so the network was built out in 97, 1998. And the cable infrastructure was built out through part of the Tacoma Power service territory. So that's where the cable infrastructure was constructed. And it's a hybrid fiber coaxial network, meaning that it's made up partly of a backbone of fiber and coaxial cable. So coaxial cable is the cable that comes to your home. It's the last quarter mile. It's the majority of the network that provides these services. It's about 1,200 miles in total. And that cable network still exists, but it's also architecture that's a bit antiquated. Technology has changed and services have changed. We now have Americans that are looking at their video programming through over-the-top services, streaming services through the Internet rather than the traditional cable TV services. And there's a need to upgrade the network to accommodate the higher bandwidth that's needed for those services. And about 10 years ago, the power utility began to look at whether or not they could continue to compete with CenturyLink and Comcast and other cable and broadband service providers. Because there's a great deal of investment that's needed to keep the network architecture upgraded and up to date. And it's also hard as a municipal government to actually provide retail services competitively. And on the broadband side, so the cable modem service became the broadband service, the Internet services that folks are very accustomed to now. The city provides only wholesale services, so it contracts with different ISPs or Internet service providers. And that was really the concept 20 years ago, is we'd create this platform and then we'd get competition by having different ISPs compete to provide services over the network. In the process of reviewing whether or not this is the right business model for Tacoma Power, we were sued in 2017 by a group of individuals who thought that it was improper for the utility to be involved in providing retail cable services and then the broadband services on a wholesale basis. And that caused the board and council to think about what they really should be doing. They hired a well-known firm out of Maryland to assist the council and the board in understanding the environment for providing these services and what the best business model might be going forward. And ultimately, through a combination of factors, the tremendous capital costs that need to be invested in this network, which are anywhere between $10 and $90 million, depending on what you want to do and what the estimates are. Just to keep up with competition and the need to provide retail services and the need to bundle services, because folks don't want to have to pay two or three different bills because there's different providers. They want to pay one bill. It's just a lot easier. And the city can't do that under its current model. The consultant that we hired looked at what we were doing and ultimately made a recommendation that we go with a model that basically allocates and moves the risk of the investment onto a private party and has a private party as an operator that would provide those services. However, under that model, the city would still retain ownership. The utility would retain ownership of all of the assets. And that's the model that was chosen by the board and the council. And they directed staff to go through an RFIQ process to solicit information and proposals and qualifications from different entities across the nation, in fact, throughout the world. Because one of the responses we got back was from Europe. And so we went through a process of reviewing the information that they provided. There were originally about 10, and it was windowed down to six, and then later three, and then eventually Rainier Connect. But we went through a fairly robust process to try to understand what the best course of action was. And through that process, I came up really with two very significant proposals. But before we got to those proposals, the council and the board thought about what's important for the community. And that's what you'll see reflected in the term sheet. I don't know if you have copies of that in your packet. But the term sheet is what was developed based upon 12 policy goals that were adopted by our utility board and our city council. And I did neglect to mention our utility board. The city is a charter city. City of Tacoma is a charter city. And under our charter, three of our six utilities are governed by a utility board. So it's a, I would say it's unique in Washington, but that's how it works. So the Tacoma Public Utility Board actually manages the power, water, and belt line or rail utility. And so both the Public Utility Board and the city council are involved in looking at these issues. And they decided that if we could find a partner that could meet these 12 policy goals, that it would make sense to move forward and bring in that third party as a new operator. And it would also, as I mentioned before, shift the obligation of maintaining the network and upgrading the network to that third party. And quite frankly, that third party is going to be much more nimble and efficient at updating the network and providing new services and responding to the needs of the community, which is something that governments do well, but fairly slowly. And I've been in municipal government for about 30 years, so I know how municipal governments work. And that was the problem that we were facing. And so ultimately, the term sheet was developed. And it came down to two entities, WAVE and Rainier Connect. And they went through a vetting process. Our outside consultant looked at their technical capabilities for managing this network, as well as their financial capabilities. And ultimately, Rainier Connect provided the better opportunity for the city to not only move to the next generation of Click, but to make it better and provide more services for its customers. And one of the benefits of Rainier Connect is that they're a local company. There are offices for us in Tacoma. But they've also been around 100 years. They're primarily in rural environments. But this presents a unique opportunity for them to take what they've developed over the last 100 years and move it out into a more urban environment in Tacoma and Lakewood, University Place. And it also gives them a presence and the ability to expand that was not available to the City of Tacoma, because our network needed to stay within the Tacoma Power service territory. Our new partner will not have that limitation. And I always want to highlight some of the things that are in these policy goals that I think are important, because these policy goals apply throughout the service territory. As I mentioned before, the first is ensure that there's continued public ownership. Public ownership, I think, helps the public understand that there is someone standing behind the network. And the way that we have approached our negotiations with the agreements with Rainier Connect, the council and the board want to ensure that all of these obligations are enforceable and that we hold whoever our partner is accountable for compliance with these obligations. And maintaining ownership is very important to that, because this is a public investment. And that investment will remain. And the improvements that will be made to the network will also be publicly owned.
So you're asking us ultimately to approve the transfer of the franchise?
At the end of the day, yes. Yes, that's correct.
And approximately how much of the city does Click service now?
City of Lakewood?
Yes.
I've got a map, a little snapshot of a service territory map, and I can hand that out, if you don't mind. And it's, I haven't lived in Lakewood for a while, so I don't remember all the streets. But you'll see from the map that it's primarily up in the, I think, the Oak Brook area, up off Silicon Boulevard, around Nynza Road. So more in the northern portion of the City of Lakewood.
And does this, would this impact the terms of the, your proposal, impact the terms of the current franchise agreement? Because there is a difference between a public utility and a private utility with respect to compensation paid under franchise agreements.
Sure. The intent is that all of the terms and conditions that are currently in the franchise would remain the same. That franchise agreement that has currently been issued to the City of Tacoma via Click, all of those terms and conditions remain the same. I don't know when that franchise is due for renewal. We know that with the FCC's order that just came out, there are significant impacts to all of cities' ability to use those franchise agreements for revenue. One of the things that we're doing in Tacoma is, it just so happens that all of our franchises are up for renewal right now, so we're taking a long, hard look at how that third order is going to impact our revenues. But for now, the terms and conditions remain the same. They would still pay franchise fees at the rates that are currently provided for Click.
Thank you.
Sure. Second important policy goal for the city council and the utility board was equitable access to service. There are a lot of cable and broadband providers that will provide one level of service in one location in jurisdiction and a level, one level of service for another, depending upon what they think the potential for generating revenue would be. And we've required in the agreement, not franchise, but the agreement, that there be ubiquitous access to services, so that in the Click service area, they cannot cherry pick off certain segments and provide only high-speed services in those segments. They would have to provide those services at the same rates throughout that service territory. There's also requirements for ubiquitous build-outs, so that they're not just building out in certain communities, but ultimately building out in all. And so equity was a very important part of the 12 policy goals to make sure that through this agreement, we aren't fostering inequitable service to the community, whether it's in Tacoma, University Place, Lakewood, or Furcrest, or out in the county. Another policy goal was to make sure that we were providing services to low-income residents. So there are two things that are in the current agreement. And one is the federal Lifeline program. Another one is a low-income product. And those two, those two products may be combined at the end of the day, but the idea is that there should be a product that is real, that meets the broadband standards, that's not a service that isn't usable to the low-income community. And Rainier Connect has committed to providing that low-income broadband service at 30 megabits per second download to 10 megabits per second upload, which is as good as anything that I have at my house. And if you combine that with the Lifeline program, if that's possible, it could potentially result in services that are very inexpensive, as low as 75 cents, maybe even $0. Ultimately, that's going to be up to Rainier Connect to figure that out. But that's one of the possibilities. And one of the things that we're searching for in this agreement is to make sure that we, that we have a low-income product throughout the service territory. We're also interested in ensuring net neutrality principles are upheld. One of the things that the FCC's done is it's made it more difficult to do that. But we believe that we can enforce those requirements to make sure they're not blocking websites or lowering the speeds on certain websites, as some cable operators are accused of doing. So net neutrality is a very important key element of our agreement with Rainier Connect, along with customer privacy, to make sure that whoever our partner is, is not monetizing the private data of your citizens and the citizens throughout the service territory. It's also our interest to preserve competition. That's one of the reasons why the city was very interested in building Click back in 1997, was because we didn't see that there was any competition. It's basically a monopoly service. And when a monopoly, when you have a monopoly, you don't get infrastructure investments. You don't get the services that you want, but you do get to pay for things you don't need and pay for bad service. And so it's important for us to make sure that there is competition. And that's the reason why the city has been looking to find a partner that can compete and that can make the infrastructure investments necessary to provide services in competition with CenturyLink and Comcast and the others that provide broadband services. The city's also included a requirement to provide hotspots, I forgot to mention this, up to 30 Wi-Fi hotspots or wireline hotspots to provide access to the Internet at locations where low-income individuals are served. Things like, sorry, the service locations for food banks and that sort of thing, where they, people go to receive food or other services and will be able to access the Internet. And I think you probably know that a lot of low-income folks, the only Internet access for them is through their phone plans. So they're doing their homework on their cell phones. And so this will provide locations where they're getting services, they can also access the Internet. And those locations will be strewn throughout the service territory. And there'll be a process for determining where those locations will be identified. As I mentioned before, one of the things that really encouraged us with Rainier Connect was their local presence. We've heard good things about their service. And one of the things that we've included in the 12 policy goals are requirements that ensure that they continue with the good customer service that they've been providing and follow on with the good customer service that Click is providing. When we did a poll of what individual customers really appreciated about Click, it was the customer service. And that was actually one of the real key things that Click was very good at. And we're hopeful that Rainier Connect will be able to follow on in their footsteps. And so our process right now is we're continuing to negotiate the agreements with Rainier Connect. One of the reasons that it's taken so long is that they're fairly complex. There are 180 fibers, only 24 of which are used for Tacoma Power. But they're all together. But they're all together. And so these are not separate networks. And one of the things we had to do was make sure that Tacoma Power infrastructure was not impacted by providing access to the Click commercial network for this third-party provider. And it's a very technical and complex process for identifying all the different parts and pieces that need to go into these agreements. We think we're really close to getting there. We're hopeful that by early September, we'll be ready to go back to our board and our council with agreements for them to consider. One of the things that I mentioned earlier was the 2017 litigation that was challenging the process for funding Click operations. There have been two subsequent lawsuits that were filed this year. One of them, well, two of the, the two lawsuits, there have been a ruling by the court that was in favor of the city. It was basically a challenge as to whether or not we were following the correct process in contracting for the Click net, for leasing the Click network. Those cases are still ongoing. They're not final yet. We don't anticipate those cases are gonna, going to interfere with our ability to move forward. So hopefully by September, we will have final agreements. And what I'd like to do now, if there aren't any questions, is turn it over to Rick and Lori. And let them talk about what it would look like transitioning from Click to Rainier Connect. Because we know that there are always questions about, is my cable going to get shut off? Is my ISP going to get shut off? Am I not going to have access to my programs anymore? And if I do have cable still after the transition, what would it look like? What programming would be available to me? Is it gonna, can I still use my remote control, that sort of thing? And Rick can also talk about the franchise process. So are there any questions?
You know, going to questions, I personally, I kind of... This is an administrative matter for us, transferring a cable franchise. There's not a lot of discretion involved. We don't own the business like Tacoma City Council. We don't impose all sorts of social constraints and policies on that. It's whether Michelle Telephone and Telegraph, now known as Rainier Connect, can assume the obligations and rights under the franchise agreement, which is pretty much an administrative transfer. We respect both the Rainier Connect and the city of Tacoma. And I don't really see that it's a controversial issue that merits another half hour of our time. Given the ability to ask some questions. Mr. Bransdiner has a question.
Yeah, you know, Lakewood is, you know, a relatively new city. So Tacoma Public Utilities has a footprint in a portion of the city. Because it had a footprint there back before we incorporated, and it is there. And one of the concerns that citizens have in certain areas of the Tacoma Public Utility footprint is when is Click going to become available in the entire footprint? Because while Click is available in some areas of the city. There are some areas that are served by Tacoma Public Utilities as their electrical provider. But they don't have access to Click. Click Click is not available to them. And when I read through the term agreement, I saw where there were some requirements to upgrade all the existing parts of the network to faster speeds.
Yes.
But I didn't find anything in there that spoke to an obligation of, or an expectation of, or a timeline to build out the network to the entire TPU. Or is that not expected?
Right. So whether, what the build-out obligations would be, would be up to the city of Lakewood in their negotiation with Rainier Connect on the next franchise. Tacoma Power will only build out within its service area. And so that's why it hasn't expanded throughout the city of Lakewood. The advantage of the franchise transfer and having Rainier Connect as the operator is they're not constrained that way. They have the opportunity to build out Lakewood if they choose to. And they have their own policies and practices for where and when they do a build-out. So the upgrade to the network, the DOCSIS 3.1 upgrade, that'll get you gigabit speeds. That will only occur within the service area that exists now. If they choose to build out into the remainder of Lakewood, that won't be subject to our agreement with them. They have the opportunity to do that, and they can connect to the Click network to provide the connectivity for those services. But that's up to Rainier Connect if and when the franchise is transferred and they take over operations.
So we are, again, we're not concerned about them building out into the whole city. Just to build out into the portion of the city that is a Tacoma Public Utilities area. But what we have is, for instance, in Oak Brook, which is served by you, they have access to Click.
Correct.
But some of the areas closer here, like along Lake Silicon. You are their utility provider. But the Click network has never been expanded to match the electrical network. You know, and it has been anticipated that that would happen sometime. But that's not a requirement being placed on Rainier to build out, build infrastructure that would become TPU-owned because it's within your service area, but would, and would serve your customers.
The way that it's drafted right now, if they chose to build out in the remainder of the Tacoma Power service area in the city of Lakewood. Then if they want to hang their facilities on TPU poles, then under the current structure, and we haven't completed the negotiations yet, so this could change. Under the current structure, that would become Tacoma Power-owned assets. The other option is they could pay to hang their facilities on Tacoma Power poles, or PSE poles, or whoever else has a presence here, and they would own those assets. And we have to draw a line somewhere in terms of what becomes Tacoma Power property and what doesn't. And that's where we've drawn it right now. So it's possible that they could build out, and it could become Tacoma Power facilities, or it could remain facilities of Rainier Connect. We envision a long-term relationship with Rainier Connect. It's a 20-year agreement with two 10-year terms that basically are renewed unless they're not in compliance. So we're looking at probably a 40-year term, and then who knows after that?
As the mayor said, you know, this is not our agreement that we're looking to do. We're more communicating with citizens who are going to ask us, well, when am I going to get Click? And the answer is, this agreement isn't necessarily addressing that at all.
That is correct.
So, yeah, just to put it another way, the, you know, the existing franchise of Tacoma Public Utilities, I believe, is coextensive with light power and Click?
Not in all locations. So the Click service area is, territory is smaller than the entire Tacoma Power service territory.
Is that true in Lakewood?
Yes. I don't know the answer to that. It sounds like it is.
Well, it's, the Click service area is smaller, but the franchise area, the geographic area. My understanding is that the area which Lakewood has granted a franchise on to Tacoma Power is, you know, built out for power. But there is area for, where the franchise exists for Click, it's not built out for Click.
I see. I wasn't aware of that.
I think that's what Mr. Bransdiner's comment was going to.
And I didn't know whether we need two franchise agreements. One for a piece of geography where there is Click, and another for, to continue the franchise agreement with Tacoma Power where there is power. When you were a single entity, we had one.
There should be two. There's a Tacoma Power franchise, and then there's the Click cable franchise. So the Tacoma Power franchise wouldn't change. Any other questions? So you're saying you don't want to hear from Rainier Connect right now? I know, I don't want to take up...
Well, I don't think there's a need. I dealt with, actually, I think it's kind of interesting because I dealt with Michelle Telephone and Telegraph three years ago, Eatonville stuff. So I just see them move in the urban areas is, shows how much times change.
Great. Well, thank you again for the opportunity. If you have any questions, Heidi knows how to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
Now we have Sarah Luna for a review of the Office of Economic Adjustment grant award.
Good evening, council. Right into it. Alright, so I'm requesting support for the Office of Economic Adjustment. City of Lakewood serving, continuing to serve as the fiduciary agent of South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, the city of Lakewood serves on the executive leadership team. The funding is the final from the Joint Land Use 2015 Implementation Funding that we'll be receiving. It's for $506,027. There is a match involved that is provided by South Sound Military and Communities Partnership at $56,890. The simple request is just ensuring that City of Lakewood continues to serve as the fiduciary agent for these funds. Keeping it brief unless there are any questions.
What's the scope of the grant?
We will be looking at three specific tasks. And this is the remainder of what is left from the 22 original recommendations from the 2015 Joint Land Use Study. And it's regarding conservation banking. So looking at endangered species and ensuring that there is some land outside of JBLM because of mission readiness. We need to have some other options for the endangered species outside of JBLM. Another is looking at alternate transportation routes to ensure that our military members are able to get to Joint Base Lewis McCord. And the final, looking at off-installation affordable housing for our active-duty service members and their dependents. And all of this goes back to that mission readiness component. We know that's so vitally important because of the $10 billion impact of Joint Base Lewis McCord in Pierce County. And the national security.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Keep it going. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Of the implementation grant, we did get some more information that there may be some opportunities in the future surrounding technology, cyber, unmanned aerial vehicles. So that may be the next iteration that we come to you with.
So, yeah, some cyber, some reference to potential for cyber grants.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, joint land use is no longer going to be the term. It's going to be compatible land use.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you, council.
Next is Veterans Drive Improvement Project update, Mr. Swanstrom and team.
Thank you. So with me tonight is Chuck Schott. He's with Parametrics. He's our design consultant for the project. And after I speak, he'll be given a quick overview of the project, the specific project design elements. But first, I'll give you a brief overview of the status of the project and the status of the public outreach efforts. So this is a fast-track project. We're scheduled to go out to bid this coming January. And we kicked off the project in April of this year, and since that time, we've completed quite a bit of work. We've completed the topographic survey and mapping for the area. We've concluded the traffic analysis. And we also have done the public outreach effort. Now, the public outreach efforts included mailing out over 800 flyers to advertise the open house, which was held on June 19th. And we also conducted an online survey for about a two, two-and-a-half week time period on the city's website. Over 100 people participated in the online survey and 38 attended the open house. Chuck and I have also met one-on-one with the Lake City business owners, as well as the Veterans Administration staff to discuss the project. The focus of the public outreach was to solicit feedback on three key design elements for the project. The first was the inclusion of roundabouts at Gravelly Lake Drive, Lake City Boulevard, Vernon Avenue, and Dolly Madison. And the second is the potential for an addition of a center turn lane. And the third aspect is whether or not the public preferred building two separate bike lanes, one in each direction on each side of the road, and standard sidewalks versus a shared bicycle pedestrian facility on one side of the road with a standard sidewalk on the other. So what we found out through the public involvement is that the general sense is that the roadway surface is really in need of repair. And that the current situation, the pedestrians and bicyclists can't really use the roadway. Those abiding the road are concerned about speed along the corridor. And we heard about the intersections of Vernon and Dolly Madison that they're problematic due to the entrance angle onto Veterans Drive. We also heard quite a bit about the parking at American Lake Park and the overflow during peak use times. When it came to the roundabouts, the citizens either loved them or hated them, which isn't, which is obvious. The shared-use bike facility on the one side of the road was favored by a two-to-one margin over the standard sidewalks and bike lanes on the road. The center turn lane is favored by those who use the corridor solely for commuting. But it was evenly split among those who actually lived along the corridor. And a small percentage of those surveyed are concerned about losing parking in front of the homes on the driveway, or on the shoulder in front of the homes. And the Lake City business owners are most concerned about conserving the existing parking in front of their businesses. So given all the public input and the traffic study that was conducted by Parametrics, we are recommending constructing the shared-use path without a center turn lane and with roundabouts at all of the four intersections. Now Chuck will elaborate a little bit more about the specific reasons for each roundabout. But in general, the roundabout at Gravelly Lake Drive will function a lot better than a Signal in the year 2030 and beyond. And then the roundabouts at Vernon and Dolly Madison will correct the skewed entrance angle of those roadways. And then the roundabout at Lake City Boulevard will act as a traffic homing because it's about midway through the straight section of the roadway. We're also not recommending a center turn lane. And the most important reason is that the traffic study conducted by Parametrics concluded that it was not warranted. The delay caused by vehicles turning left didn't meet the threshold to warrant a center turn lane. And the fact that it wasn't a strong desire by the residents out living along the corridor. Also, it would have increased the cost, pushed the improvements about six feet closer to residences on each side of the road. And within, there's a portion of the project that is, has only a 60-foot right-of-way. The majority of the project has an 80-foot right-of-way. But in that 60-foot right-of-way, the addition of the center turn lane would have mean that we would have had to decrease either the sidewalk or other functions or other aspects of the road to fit the whole cross-section in, without purchasing additional right-of-way. Also, a wider roadway tends to encourage people to go faster along the road. And then regardless, the center turn lane wouldn't work through the business district due to the parking concerns by the businesses. We're also recommending that we do not include any on-street parking. The main reason for this is even though Veterans does travel through a residential neighborhood, it is a minor arterial. And allowing parking on the road or on the side of the road will cause sight distance hazards for those backing out of their driveways. And most of the properties are set back pretty far from the road. And they should be able to accommodate parking on the private property. There are a few that will have to work with the owners to come up with some creative solution. But, but most of them will be fine. When it comes to the American Lake parking, I do have some recent photos from a citizen. That's okay. So there is, there is an issue out there with the peak use times. The Veterans Drive does get pretty, pretty loaded up with vehicles not being able to find parking within the parking lot. So with this project, we will be eliminating all that parking on the shoulder. And so we are recommending that we do a small expansion of the existing parking lot at the American Lake Park and reconfigure it. And it won't solve the problem completely, but it will add approximately 40, 40 spaces to the parking lot. We have also identified a few areas that Council may want to consider in the future. There is a .4 acre vacant lot directly across the street from the park, which would be great for overflow parking. And there is also the potential to add parking within the right-of-way on North Lake Drive. It's a little bit further from, from the park, but it's in the right-of-way, and we have, we've got adequate, adequate room to do so. And Chuck will point these out a little bit more when he shows you and goes to the design elements of the project. So the project will also include the full roadway, roadway reconstruction. It'll be a complete stormwater infrastructure rebuild. There'll be street lightings, and we will put the capability of hanging banners along the road, since it is Veterans Drive. We thought it'd be a good, good way to honor, honor those who served. And we will be looking at whether or not pedestrian lighting along the shared-use path makes sense. And there is the possibility of also enhancing or providing enhanced crosswalks at the intersections that won't have a roundabout. We're also contemplating putting in speed radar feedback signs to add a traffic calming element. So once we settle on the final cross-section, Parametrics can move quickly on to design, and we should be back to Council probably mid to late, mid, start to mid-October with some cost estimates. There are a couple of things we want to accomplish. We definitely want to accomplish the full corridor build-out from American Lake Park to Gravely Lake Drive, but that would not include the roundabout at Gravely Lake Drive. That is slated for a future project to be fully designed and constructed. However, if we end up with, with the cost estimates and they come back good, what we intend to do is extend the improvements from American Lake Park all the way west to the VA entrance. And if we really get lucky and project estimates come in, we could add the design and, and the construction of the Gravely Lake Drive project. But it's likely that that, that won't happen, and likely that'll have to be added to later project. There is the possibility to look at the roundabout at Lake City Boulevard, if that's something that is not wanted or not, there's a trade-off. If we don't build that, we might be able to push the improvements further to Veterans, or to the VA hospital entrance. So we'll be looking at, at that as well. The only thing that will do, it will, it will eliminate a traffic calming piece to the project. So if we do end up not building that roundabout, we'll probably look at potentially narrowing the lanes up to 11 feet wide, which has its pros and cons. It should slow traffic down, but the roadway is heavily used by boat traffic. So we have to look at that closely. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Chuck. And we have a, we have the map behind me here, and it's probably easiest just to get up and, and have Chuck go through with you.
Questions now?
Sure.
Mr. Whalen.
Eric, real quick, I don't hear you say that we need to have right-of-way acquisition with the plan as designed.
That is correct. The current design does not include additional right-of-way. There is a development on Gravely Lake Drive and Veterans on the, on the south. Yep. That we are, we do need them to dedicate the right-of-way to, to fit this in.
So where's the, the 80 feet runs from, or Gravely Lake to the park?
No, so it runs from 83rd West to the VA entrance. So it's on the very east end of the project, from 83rd towards Gravely, that we have the 60-foot right-of-way.
So it goes to the, it's the, on the part that we, it's kind of an option on this, basically?
Both. The, it runs about two-thirds of the project.
All the mailboxes, not the mailboxes and the sidewalks, are we?
No. So with the cross-section you got there, you see the landscape buffer, the five feet. The mailboxes will fit great in that area. And on the other side of the street, we're proposing an eight-foot wide sidewalk, so that we can put some trees in and still have ADA access behind them. And so with that wider sidewalk, those mailboxes would be put out on the curb side.
So, but there'll be curbs on both sides of the road?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I, I think, just from, I, I appreciate your, your diligence and, and your recommendations. Just from personal experience, I commute this a couple times a week. There are, the curbs would have a calming effect in themselves. But between the congestion of the VA staff commute, buses, garbage trucks, I am always behind a bus or a garbage truck, slow elderly drivers going to and from the VA, there's a lot of traffic calming there.
Yeah.
It's, it's, and I, I appreciate the, the tentative elimination of the, of the turn lane, because I, I think that would invite more street with that wide avenue visual as opposed to the constriction. So it's not that far. I don't think people need to hurry through there. And, and I am concerned that the neighbors and the VA have both expressed a concern for folks walking out of the VA facility to the park, back and forth. And I think that's an important element to include in this. So hopefully we can.
Make it that far.
Get that far. Other questions? Mr. Brens, better.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the current road is a mix of speed limits. It's one speed limit, it changes and changes again. Are we going to move to a consistent speed limit throughout, or are we going to have that?
Yes, we are going to propose that we change it to 25 the whole distance.
To?
The whole distance, from Gravely Lake Drive to the VA entrance. Okay, maybe 30.
I mean, I mean, 25 doesn't sound consistent with being a minor arterial.
We can look at those, and we'll look at the speed studies, and the city engineer can help determine that speed.
And what can we do? I understand we're going to eliminate the shoulder parking, where we currently have the occasional parking of trailers and things when the, the, the lot at the boat ramp backs up to do that. How are we going to prevent just transferring that to Vernon?
So the, the addition of the 40 spaces in the parking lot will go a long way to do that. The last sunny weekend, Sergeant Fraser was out there, and he did have to ticket several personal vehicles that were parked in the trailer, in the trailer park.
So when, when you speak of 40 additional parking spaces, are these, originally, when you first said it, I thought you were talking about cars. But you're talking about cars or trailers?
No, the, the additional parking is only the vehicles, not trailers as well.
So that doesn't particularly mitigate the boats and cars pulling trailers and boats that are, that, that exceed the capacity at, at, at the boat.
Yeah, correct.
And the, you mentioned a .4 acre piece of property. Did you mention that because you think it's available?
No, we have no idea if it's available. It's vacant, and it's a somewhat local owner out of Graham, Washington.
And then, so?
Everything's available for a price.
Well, well, I, I suppose, and I, and I could see the spot. The, you know, I guess I would be in favor of keeping the roundabout at, 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 at Lake, Lake City, in, in part because that is a, a fairly, of the other streets that cross, it is perhaps the most busy after Vernon. It also has a, a fire station is on that street, a few blocks up. And the school district has told us that they are land-bait banking the current property that they own, which is just off, off of that for an eventual future capital project. And while that may be a decade away, it's, you know, it's, it's definitely something that would bring back school crossings and, and things to there, and the, and the roundabout would be, and the calming of that in both directions on both of those streets would be, would be, would be, would be helpful. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. Let's first talk about the, getting rid of the turn lanes. And I get that getting rid of the turns, if you put a, I don't know how, how foot, 10-foot wide, 11-foot wide turn lane in there, it tends to increase speeds. And I, and I understand that. But when, I want to talk about the Lake City Business District that we call it, and it, it's kind of a hodgepodge of roads and different elevations and various things like that. But I also, maybe the people right in that area don't think so. But I believe that, long-term, that's probably an area that's ripe for redevelopment as a neighborhood business district. And so part of me is thinking, do you have any plans to do a turn lane there? Or are you just, or how are we gonna, before we look at the maps, I guess, maybe you can try to explain to me. You've got different roads going in, kinda coming out, and then we've got businesses on either side. And I suspect someday that there may actually be more activity in that area. But no turn lane? Is that the plan?
Yeah, that's, that is correct. The addition of the turn lane through that section would wipe out any parking that they have currently fronting the businesses. The good part about the dual roundabout, the one at Vernon and the one at Dolly Madison, is it eliminates the need for a left turn, because if you really can't make a left turn, you go around a roundabout, and then you make a right, right turn into the parking lot.
So then, I'm also, this .4 acre, I do think that that needs to be probably part of the deal. I mean, we'll, we'll have to do it on our side, or on some other side. But we are going to have to discuss that probably, because if we make it even more difficult to access, we already make it very difficult to access our lakes in some cases. It's one of my pet peeves. And now, you know, now we're like magically making it more difficult by taking away on-street parking. So I, I think we are going to have to look at that as part of the whole, the whole thing.
Mr. Brens, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. And I want to see if we can come to some sort of consensus over concrete. Yeah. According to your data, it looked to me like it was a fairly good split between roundabouts in favor and roundabouts as opposed. Both cite safety. One cites maneuverability, the other cites traffic movement, all of which are true. So engineers, is there a way to make these roundabouts that addresses both concerns? Because I've seen the boat, I've seen it from both sides. I think as far as traffic movement, they're fine. But when you've got boat trailers or tr, school buses or things like that, they are not fine. And I'm assuming this will be a two-lane, is there two-lane roundabouts? Oh, just one lane?
Yeah, all of the roundabouts on the actual corridor are one-lane. The roundabout on Gravely would be a two-lane in the northbound direction.
My, if they're, even if it's just sticking with a one-lane roundabout, that brings up the whole idea of, of maneuverability. So is there a way on those ones that are the one lane, we make them a little wider to accommodate that? Because both sides of this issue on roundabouts, they have, those are valid points. And it looked to me like the data split on that. So I'm, I just throw that out there as an idea to the engineers. And I see one of them nodding his head, yes. Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
So the, the roundabout at Dolly Madison and the one at Lake City would be considered a compact roundabout. So the central island of it would have like a four-inch-high curb around it and would be fully mountable. So in the drawings, you'll see they're shown as like kind of a red brick color. They could really be just about anything. The roundabout at Vernon is large enough that when we run our turning templates, we have on our, on the computer, the parameters of the vehicles, a, you know, a truck and a, and a boat trailer would have a, an apron on the inside that would have that four-inch high. So basically trucks or buses, their back wheels could trail onto that central island. But it's high enough that a single, you know, a personal car wouldn't, would drive around it to slow them down. So the, the one at Vernon is, we haven't really, you know, maintenance doesn't want to be maintaining a whole bunch of plants and stuff in the middle. So we have it shown kind of just as a beige color that could be some kind of hardscape or, but at Vernon, we're anticipating it, it would have a non-traversible central island with a, with a, like a six-foot-wide apron that trucks and boats could, could track across. And then at Gravely Lake is, would, would also have, similar to Vernon.
Now, you mentioned Gravely Lake in your presentation, and that you said something that caught my ear, and that was, will it, will, your statement sounded like Fiat to me. That light will go away. But I did not hear any supporting data as to why that light on that road should go away in favor of a roundabout.
So, so the traffic study shows that in, at the year, let me, let me back up a little bit. A single-lane roundabout at Gravely Lake Drive would, in, in our current traffic conditions, would have better level of service, reduced delay, increased capacity. And in the year 2030, overall, it would function better than a signalized intersection would. There's one approach, the southbound approach in the AM. South, actually. So, yeah. So the southbound approach in the AM has some delay that's basically the, the volume is, exceeds the capacity on that one approach. So theoretically, it would, it would continue to back up until the volumes went down. So if, when we walk over and take a look at this, the traffic showed that, interestingly, adding either, adding either a right-turn slip lane for the southbound direction, similar to what's there right now, would, would alleviate that. It would require a right-of-way. So part of our charge was to not require a right-of-way. So the other solution we looked at is adding for the, the northbound movement, essentially, you'd have a left-turn pocket there. So vehicles that want to go left and head west on Veterans Drive would be in the left lane and do that. The ones that want to go through would, would be in a separate lane that would continue north. So it, it's, it seems a little counterintuitive, but basically, the northbound vehicles, the cars wanting to turn left heading northbound don't need to, or, I'm sorry, back up. Cars going southbound don't need to worry about the ones going northbound. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Bartholomew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment on the roundabouts. Don't you think that part of the data was a result of people not really understanding how to use a roundabout? I, I think that, that they think that they're fearful of it, they don't know how to operate it. But you go into the other cities that have a lot of roundabouts and it's quite seamless. So I think that the data may be mixed.
I think that's a good point. The only thing I've seen, and I'm certainly not, not in favor of roundabouts, I do favor. But on two and more lane roundabouts, I have seen people in the right lane, or excuse me, in the middle, in the left lane. And they are not looking at the person to the right. And you've got that meeting where they're both trying to go right. And that's part of what I think the public perception is of these here. And I don't know, that's why I suggested the idea, floated the idea that, well, maybe we need to make these things a little more friendly. Because I have seen, I'm one of these idiots out there who do not look to their right. They merge right when they're coming out of that left lane and there's already somebody there. And so that's what I'm, that's why I, and your answer to Gravely Lake was perfect. As soon as you explained it, it's counterintuitive, I understood. My colleagues would say that I'm counterintuitive anyway. But that's why I think, and I think my colleague is correct. It's, it's, it's how, not so much how they're built, but how certain people drive. And that's what led me to the whole line of questioning.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bulkey.
So let's talk about traffic volumes. And, and do we have any history of traffic volumes? Are they increasing, decreasing, kinda staying the same? What are the peak hours?
Yeah, the, we do have history of traffic volumes. They've, they've stayed fairly consistent the past 10 years. Whenever we do a traffic study, we do put in a growth for the traffic. This, this area is very well-developed, with the exception of the VA selling their property and turning it into some mega subdivision. I think you put in one or one and a half percent growth in your.
We did, yeah, one and a half percent.
So.
So, the part, the part between the park and the VA, and I, and I think we're in agreement that that's a good add. Because the, the way when we were initially talking and we initially agreed to, that we would stop at the park, right? With the immediate question from everybody who would drive there would be, why did you stop? And it's a good question. So, the right of ways, it, it seems like all of a sudden the houses get a lot closer after the park going towards the hospital. Is that just my misperception? Or is that, do we have the same amount of right of way in that area?
We have eighty feet.
Well, the first segment one is sixty feet.
Okay, it does go down to sixty feet. But the, the houses are closer to the road. They, they are closer to the property lines.
And so what kind of challenges could we have with that? Could we end up having to buy some properties?
So currently, no. We are going to make the section fit. There are some possibilities. We might shrink the landscape island from five to three feet. And then on the eight foot sidewalk side, we could shrink it down to six feet. And the good part about that section is that there is currently a lot of vegetation. So we could bring that sidewalk, the eight foot sidewalk down to eight feet and not notice the, that we didn't plant any trees in that location.
Other questions?
Let's take a look.
Okay.
We, we tend to talk about American Lake Park to Gravely Lake Drive, defining the project. But we all kind of think of it in terms of, we're over here somewhere and we wanna go to the park or somewhere beyond. So that's why we drew the section from that perspective. So that's looking in this direction. So the shared use path would be along the south side. So this is the layout of the roundabout. It shows the option of the, of the left turn lane that would come this way. One other thing to mention is, you know, one lane roundabouts are kinda like roundabouts on triangles. I think the people have experience on two lane roundabouts where a lot of the confusion comes. I mean, really at a one lane roundabout, somebody pulls up and they just need to watch for cars coming this way. And they move in wherever they wanna go, you know, they, people joke about American, or European vacation. So the other, the other thing on this, this is, this is called an eyelash or a spiral. So because we have, we, we would have two lanes on this side. But somebody who's coming, actually, somebody who's coming this way wants to make a left, you don't have them on the inside lane cutting someone off because they're, they're getting pushed to the outside lane where they wanna go. So these people would need to merge. The other thing is, is there's only one lane here for them to be watching to merge with.
So you're saying this, this is not part of this deal?
That's not.
So you start out there. This is the next. This would be twenty. I know, this guy who wants to go left, he's gonna go. I watch for this guy, you watch for this guy.
Well, see, once, once you're in, you don't need to, so these, it's, what's not shown here is there would be a yield sign and it's a yield stripe. They call it like sharp teeth. So, so if, if these people are obeying the yield sign, which they tend to do, once, once you're in, you're, you're, you just need nowhere to turn off. You know, there's other roundabouts out there also that, roundabouts kinda lend themselves to difficult intersections. And a lot of times those have like five roads coming out of them. And I think that's where there's a lot of confusion too, is people get in and they lose their bearings and they don't know where to get out. All of ours are really pretty straightforward in that regard.
So this property here tells me, this is the Barker property, right?
Correct.
So where are they gonna access it? Are they gonna access on to veterans here?
Yeah, they have.
Okay, but not on ground, right? How's that gonna impact your roundabout?
We will, we will check to see if that, how that's protected in there. Yeah, yeah, but I, they don't own all the way over to there, the way that's. And so you'll see, this, this does go beyond the right of way a bit. That's assuming the dedication of ten feet here. The, the other, the other benefit about the roundabout is that, to see the exit from Lake Old Birds, which right now, they don't have a signal display. It's actually challenging. So what we're recommending is a, is a driveway entrance directly into the roundabout. So they would be able to go out and head in directions that they wanted to go without it needing to be a signalized approach. The other is that the storage of vehicles here to make left-hand turns, keep that from getting too long. Actually, I should say, this width here, in order to have that left turn, we back up. If it remained a signal, we would need to fit a center turn lane in here. And what Eric mentioned was, we would need to compromise on the buffer between the shared use path or narrow the sidewalk to fit it into the right of way here.
But if you also, if you did leave a signal here, wouldn't you also solve the problem that you currently have?
It, the, the signal, the signal couldn't be, the signal couldn't be rebuilt to give them a signalized approach, yes.
Just shifting it to cost, what's the difference in cost here with what we have here? And doing, making the changes you give with the signal?
I, I think we, we, we haven't costed it out. I, I can tell you from experience, usually, the roundabout is disadvantageous when you need to buy right of way because it requires more space. You don't have the cost of reconstructing the signal infrastructure. And you don't have to maintain and operate that signal for perpetuity.
You're fucking in the traffic flow without the signal. I think it's better for a lot of people.
What I'm thinking, Jason, is that the, the roundabouts make sense all the now. This is what's bothering me because you also need to say a signal, slow each traffic down on Gravely. It brings you to a stop. It also accomplishes what you're trying to do out there. This is me like, I don't know what I'm talking about, engineering here. Whereas you see, you're probably laughing.
I am telling you, I am telling you, I am telling you. I just talked to a lady over there from, she's on the board for our Lake Old, Lake Old Department. And we are well aware of the concerns there. So any future design, would it help for that exit out there? And would also. Part of the reason why I want to, I may be quite sure. Part of the reason why we're evaluating, evaluating that right now is because we know that, you know, we have a strong feeling that we're gonna end up with a roundabout, a double roundabout, interlocking, washing, or.
All right.
Ignore it.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, that is slowing traffic really nicely. And this will become a bottleneck for the intersection, traffic right here. I wanna know if we have an option to consider making it a roundabout here or a roundabout there. Both of them will be designed to allow traffic flow, but not high-speed traffic. We need, we need a roundabout to interlock and wash the water and.
Paul, can I, can I add one thing to that? Everything you said makes sense. Everything you've made, said makes sense until you use the word, or target here, power to. How is it driving, the person driving their car here to know that when they approach this? And would not a light remove that?
The counterintu- You wouldn't think that's even on it there. All I can say is, conceptually, we wanna know if it will work, if it will work. And that's all we need for this project. We wanna make sure that our project is future compatible.
The other thing to mention is that, just like a signalized intersection, if somebody wants to turn left, there's gonna be a sign here saying, if you wanna get left, turn left, get in this lane. And if you go into that lane, there's only one way for you to go, or you want to go.
So here's. Again, thinking, thinking for a turn, it's crazy. What happens when there's a hundred car parade, VHS chain, everybody's coming out here and going here? What happens to the folks coming here who now get a reader or must want to be a client? They blend, they blend, they, they, it's just like the zipper on, going on the freeway, the zipper in, zipper through.
And, and actually, they need the yield going in. So that, that hundred car parade is, is gonna wait here until they each get to go to a meter. And, and, and another thing also about this, the speeds, the, the, the circulate, the speed of vehicles, geometrically, it's designed to control the speeds here. And it's about 25 miles an hour. So whether you've got a red light or a green light, it's going down to 25 miles an hour to go through here.
I think it would be nice to, like, the traffic source, we gotta guard and warn it there twice. Because I thought I knew more when they get off line, I wasn't quite sure.
So, so now that's, so.
In, in the discussion about mailboxes, you described that, that they, because there's a planner script of any mailbox, you need a planner script. And that's fine on this side of the road. But there's not a planner script, there's just named for missing, greens, on the other side. So, how are mailboxes handled on that side?
So with the eight block sidewalk, you know, most of it, you can fill up in a lot of green and for a few, you can, okay, but I'm still.
When you, I, 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 are you going to, I, I guess the, the question is aesthetic. Is it gonna look like it's in the site?
It will. I mean, well, yes, it will.
Or are you going to like? There's our, my, we, we could, we can make that more specific.
We're slate colored, yeah. So we could make it a little different. Which I would, I would recommend it actually. So, and, and these, this red and green is just intended in to get a concept of like hearts being, being bricks or papers and lanterns. But definitely a roundabout would make it a different color, texture, so that people know that's not hard to set.
That's a tough question.
I, I, I live, I, I live in that area.
So the group mailboxes typically counseling direction, also, I'm asking you, most men, right?
The idea of group mailboxes eliminates the number of stops. And if somebody, one of those folks said they wanted, they, they over there, tell them, well, you're gonna have to get a speed limit. Two feet, two yards, curve the sidewalks around you. You know, and you, 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 you exist on that, then, you know, we're not gonna buy it from you. Sidewalk, these things should make it, sidewalk.
Well, we have, we have the right of way.
People are funny about that.
Exactly. So, so the question of, of right of way width came up before. So, so basically from eighty third back is the sixty foot right of way. It bumps out eighty foot all the way along here and through here. Is eighty foot, this is a little bit of sixty in here. And then, from the park down is the sixty foot. And, and that feels a lot narrower, but it's not really. I think it's the established vegetation and the trees. It's, it's just a lot more close in. And it's interesting how the feel is completely different and wants to slow you down.
So, you know, is this, is this, you know? Because the way, normally it'd be eighty, but it's right, eighty foot right of way is on the left of the streetcar. Because there was sixty foot runway today, that's down Miami. There's an extra twenty feet for the whole railway.
Those, those are eighties over there.
Yeah, it looks like eighty there. And this was a streetcar turn.
How about sixty?
The one, twenty feet, let's say it's twenty feet. And that's why I think so, because we have a herd here.
Okay. So, so this is currently, this is currently posted thirty miles an hour from here down. The, the rest of this is 25. The speed studies we took, we took in four locations and they were, they were typically within three miles per hour of the posted speed, except the one we did here, which was more like thirty miles an hour, insisted with this here. So the roundabout, the transition and the straightaway, just kinda continuing people through.
Did the public input, do they desperately wanna keep that right now?
You know, I don't think the public, they're just going in.
No, that, that actually wasn't, that was our observation, standing up there and watching people fly off of veterans. On the Kimwood, and we said that the way it's aligned right now, if you do that, you're on a super elevator and they just kinda fly off and drop down. So by doing it this way, we're going to prevent that. They're gonna have to slow down and make a right turn.
Oh, you're gonna, okay, so right now, it's, yes.
Yes, it is not do. If you come out here, like at the end of that, it was like, you're almost head on.
Yes.
We're also, you're gonna go like this. We're also considering maybe this is a right in, left on. Because anybody who's here, really, it's, this is still a difficult turn for them to make through. So considering they would wanna, you're gonna have that, that's safer. Because anybody who's here, uh, really is, this is still a difficult turn for them to make through, so considering they would wanna know if you're gonna have that, though, safer. And honestly, if they're here and they wanna go this direction, they will take the shortcut, they can, but this is still much faster.
Someone mentioned redevelopment, this was an area that we saw, that, you know, this is a really wide right-of-way, there's a lot of, a lot of space in here, that, you know, and, and at one point, we had this roundabout, we felt like we needed some property from here to make it work, and we were gonna give them some over here in exchange, but we managed to fit it here, down in the right-of-way. The Dennis office, I think they have a lot of time looking out the window, watching what's going on, and they think a roundabout's a great idea. And the, uh, the woman that owns this, I think, said she got in an accident driving through here, and so, both, both folks are very in favor of this, and I think this gentleman will be in favor when we don't need the changes part. So, um, this is the, exactly. This is... This is where the, the big Gary Oak is, that we squeezed it in, and, and, uh, consulted an arborist. Um, he said that if we make this segment of sidewalk herbious, um, the tree will continue to survive. He, he said the tree's in fair condition, and I said, why isn't it great? He said, it's, it's in great condition for where it is. It's its highest potential, so...
It's got asphalt all around it, yeah.
Um, and so, let's see, um, this, we, we did try to, and I think we've got it drawn that way, to keep the back of trail and the back of walk generally centered in the right-of-way, to be equitable to people on both sides. Um, the, these folks you can see have front yards that are out into the right-of-way. Um, and, and the gentleman who runs the market, who's the nephew of the owner of the building, who's been very vocal, um, as you can see, we're anticipating this would turn into anchor parking, and we would work with them on something for their delivery trucks. They have a large, um, we hear, uh, there's...
Kind of like what you did on, uh, we brought some, go the event.
Yes.
Was this basically?
That's on side downs.
If we were to acquire that, uh, keep the property there, how would we configure access for the market?
They're talking about coming out here.
So this parcel is shaped, kind of a funny shape, uh, it's point four acres. We could provide access up here, uh, I don't think, nothing here, I believe it works, so probably to access here. Could be a potential to help to remember about, or it's hard there, but it is.
The fact that you park, be not just for the park, but for some speed development of the business.
Correct.
I'm keeping on, on this side of the draw, so I was gonna do that here.
Yeah.
There's plenty of site distance in here, so that wouldn't be an issue. And it's a poor spot, so unless they drop their boat, and then, you know, use roundabout, turn the main, we haven't figured out how many, the space is up the trailer, or the parts of parks, that would be a heck of a lot more than they have right along here, where they're in the current, you know, in front.
I take it that a lot of the boat owners, you're, we're gonna have to discuss this.
Well, it wasn't lived there, so we actually have to be, kind of...
So we, you know, we, we did, the, we had owned the espresso stand.
That's where they're expressing.
Yeah, you know, they have long-term plans of turning this into a fish fry, and they own the pub. You know, concerned about parking, understandably, we're gonna keep as much of it as we can in there. We threw out ideas of, of developing this into city parking, or, you know, over here, city parking out of, out of concern, I think, for the city-homing parking that then has violators or camping, and we, we have stayed away from that. So, um, unless there's an interest for us to look into that more, we're, we're staying focused on the road. Um, this roundabout solves the two, you know, right now, intersections that are very skewed, uh, as well as the parking enforcement issues. Um, reconfiguring the park, parking lot, um, pick up the extra, I keep saying thirty or forty, and they're actually pushing me to say it's forty. But, um, it's basically just, as, um, as you can see, this, there, and this, this kinda gives you an idea of, you know, where the existing parking is, and so it would, it would change the, you know, right now, people circulate around like that. This, people would come in, there, there would be some more people driving different directions, but maximizing the number of spaces in there, um, to, to pick up the extra forty parking spaces.
So if we will leave some green, leave some trees, and some limited numbers, let's talk about that.
Yeah, so there, there's, there's approximately ten trees over here, um, you know, there's one on each side of the driveway entrance. We don't, because we just did this at a concept level, we didn't have survey, we don't know exactly where they are. I think that we could put, you know, convert a space into a parking stall where the tree would be. Um, down here, there's, there's probably a handful of trees that are right in line with this, that we could either remove those and keep others near it, or if we, when we get into the detail of the design, and maybe the entrance is over here, and the curves are round, when we know where the trees are exactly, we'll figure out how to save as many of them as we can.
And planting some new trees, and plant a brick along the road, basically.
Right, and, and a number of them actually here in the parking lot. Um, the Mary, the Parks Director, I think in conversation with her suggested that maybe there would be a sidewalk, forget, but sidewalk in here for the entrance, as opposed, you know, so there'd be landscape and sidewalk coming down this way, and we'll put the trash bins somewhere other than right in front of the entrance, somewhere. Oh, yeah.
This would be the, the monument side of the park, you have that nice space there, where's the landscaping, you know, right at the entrance.
Yeah, and, and even though the, the roundabout won't be in the park, by landscaping and building this, would, it will feel like this is all the park.
Right, that's something to do with that.
Yep, yep, so there's, there's showing monument sign and, and the...
There'll be a sign right over there saying, extra parking right there.
Yes.
There'll be a sign like that, saying, extra parking.
Well, it's an entrepreneurial neighbor, you know, you should put a sign.
He's a little...
What do you don't know?
But we'll probably move on as far, the idea of being able to provide additional parking, from parameters on, is taking that whole park's products, appreciate that. This is not a park, this is a, where the council likes this, we mark this, we'll negotiate and achieve whatever this does for us, so that we can do certain work, and design work, and then you have this, right? If you like that, we'd definitely do that, too. Um, but I would like to be able to hear your concerns for you, that this is something here actually paid around, I think it's a great idea personally. This, this is like, no brainer.
And, and this, sort of, later, depending, what stats say, uh, over the...
Yeah.
If you get that, maybe I'd rather... But if you get a, you back, well, that's, this is something, we can answer this project.
This project, I mean, you...
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Washington.
Which is not, if you do stand with a hundred thousand, still, um, if we did not put in a driveway return here, or a concrete change, as long as we make sure that the project is working out, being able to outboard next year, and it wasn't any kind of conflict with traffic going through that, it's not, um, maybe, sometimes, then we could definitely do some like reporting on that, or...
You could also make it a parking lot, both in and out of the pile, with just, with Esri, and, and just whatever we have across.
Because, the question is, is what is your goal to center the park, do you expect it to be open trailer, or the cars? And what we keep hearing is open trailer. By adding forty new stalls here, that's a pretty big foot on cars. This over here, there's no, there's no land acquisition or anything, that could be developed, be real, truly purposeful parking for this. Sure, four or five times a year, when this could handle my, my, my... That's why we have to look at the geography over here, but it seems like a pretty no-brainer, in fact, we have to be comfortable with, um, here.
Ever run out of car space? Yes.
We can, yeah, but, really, they do show that they're lined up on both sides, and they're going down here, and it's, it's...
It's national night out.
But, but weekends, a little bit, you know, five minutes.
So the only thing is, that if we get into a situation, bids are a little bit high, you know, that, uh, you know, like, so we originally talked about going here, and then this would, if, if, wow, you know, you know, wouldn't wanna like, eliminate sidewalks, anything, or anything like that. Just, just to, just to reach you.
So Eric mentioned, you know, because it's part of presentation, that the goal of the project, the primary goal is building here to that, which includes this. Which includes this and this.
And a perfect, that's the value.
We could do that, but that wasn't part of the original project. So this would have to be a different...
It'd have to be a different...
The second goal for the project is to, and this would be a competing goal, if you'd like to put the roundabout in at, at Lincoln, but if that costs us too much, and we can't build this, this would be the next priority.
And I'd rather keep a roundabout, like, see.
Uh, no, I would rather extend it all the way down here.
Then that would be our third priority.
I think we could not, you know, like, financial situation.
We keep doing that, and there's too many projects, or we, we vote something in the middle and never go back to it. It'd be like Yipkin's group.
We can, we can look at what our financial situation is.
No, I agree.
One, one thing, one thing to mention is that the overflow parking for this is, is most apparent along here. People will park all the way down there. I was out a couple Sundays ago, and I was able to just park right here at Carter's, or all the way down there. So I only mentioned that in terms of, if, if we didn't do this, that overflow parking on the street would be, would be the same as it is now, which I think would be a little less of an impetus to do this. There, there, there would be negligible impact to the park overflow parking by our project if we didn't do that.
I, I would like to believe that people that have the opportunity to park here, it will fill this first, for the, yeah, especially if, how many of that forty would fill here, would it be here, or would we just fill this up and empty it, if it's, if it's, if it's more now?
Oh, yeah, no.
If we fill all, they will not be parking here.
Wasn't that similar, are you talking about the, the stormwater area?
I, I, I have, I have not yet, so the, the stormwater's, you know, gonna be like all of the projects, like, we're gonna, we're gonna infiltrate it. The, the landscaping, um, you know, we, we've just kind of drawn trees on here, conveyed the concept, and make sure that everyone realizes this isn't a tree-lined boulevard all the way along, putting trees where we can fit them. There will be some planting shown in green, and there'll be some hardscape. You know, the Parks Maintenance folks were saying, we don't wanna maintain a whole bunch of landscaping out here. Um, Darren, our, our landscape architect is, is great at coming up with things that will establish this buffer, you know, as an aesthetic feature. It's also a buffer for the trail from the roadway. Um, and then also, as, as we talked about, our mailboxes, we could do the same thing, where they're decorated concrete around where the mailboxes are. Uh, trash bins also, you know, they're only gonna take up half the six-foot sidewalk instead of all of it, and, um, trying to think of the, the, or is that...
Um, between the ones.
Oh, yeah, so, oh, yeah, phylteris. Um, we're, we're gonna be considering that as an option, I think, so... Okay. So, so there, there, uh, a, a tree in a box, or a phylteris, is basically, it's, it's like a, it's like a normal drain, except for it goes through, or into a box with a, a compost media that treat the water before it goes down into the storm drain system, before we infiltrate it, and it go, and the tree, and it grows in the tree.
And the tree growing in.
Yep.
Oh, wow, that's interesting.
It goes through that, and go out through the, it's basically French on the side of it. So, from the O and M maintenance side, once or twice a year, they go out there, they lift the grate off, they pick up any traction, debris. Uh, every couple years, they go in and they remove, usually using a, a backer, they remove the top couple inches of compost, and there's bags in there, we put that bag down, put the lid off, and they're done. And that's the tree.
Mike had a good, Mike had a good question, in terms of, I don't know, there's a current, uh, fierce fancy cluster home here. Is there any opportunity for pullouts?
They don't like pullouts.
They told us they don't want pullouts. Flesh comes down from, so you stop along, you, 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 they really pull in, and they pull out.
Probably stop it down.
Stop here, but here, one there, and then the other one here.
There's one more, I mean, one back here, so...
Good job, Eric.
Yeah, wow, this is quite a project.
How many months is it gonna take to construct this?
Uh, probably not too many months.
Yeah, it's more than, this is our, our, what, two million stake, big plant. So, which end is this, or what do you think? Initially, they have been, um, and they asked us to come to them, so in September, we're coming, and we're gonna go through a lot of stuff, which has the, the outcome. And then we're gonna invite the residents, you can have, along the paths. We're not gonna send out eighty-nine flyers, we're gonna invite the residents to live along the paths, and the visiting, come to the meetings, to see the outcome of all the work, uh, here. We put a lot of time to thought.
No, you did.
So what do you guys think from us in terms of consensus? Do you want a thumbs up on this?
I think all I need right now is just a thumbs up. I don't need any, uh, official, any...
Yes, will that, will that construction, we gotta give that part.
This, this would be a, sorry, hard...
We gotta give that money, part, is that...
For the, for the part, I think, yeah.
You would do that?
I view this as mitigation for the vulnerable, uh, on-street partners from the park, so I'm comfortable saying that the bond funds can cover this. Um, anything beyond that, I would not be able to say that's a true, true of the project. We're eliminating a lot of parking in the street, so, this is what we're trying to do.
Correct, yeah, yeah, the driveway entrance would just remain where it is there.
We don't go down, uh, a couple of days.
So you have, uh, we'll come back to the, we have some guy who prices his out.
Yep.
Except, except, this is, this locker. Perhaps it's in your bailiwick, uh... Perhaps it is in your bailiwick, as much as the Public Works folks, uh, find out what our legal options are with respect to grouping mailboxes, instead of putting posts in the concrete. Alright, thank you. And we'll stay with the theme of building things. We have a Parks Capital Improvement Program update from Ms. Dodsworth.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and City Council. So I'm happy to continue the conversation regarding amazing ways that parks serve our community with an update on our Parks CIP program. So, starting on page thirty-four, um, we've listed, I don't know if this, we've listed, um, the projects that are part of our, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, CIP is approved by you. Uh, the first page just talks about some of those things that we've completed this year already. We've replaced two playgrounds, um, we have three new gateway monuments that have gone in, and of course, the granddaddy of them all is the Fort Silicon Park transfer, we're pretty proud of that, we've been working on that. Uh, starting on the next page, thirty-five, is, I thought I would just go through here, uh, we've briefly laid out all of the different projects, and tried to provide you with funding updates and timeframes, so that you can kind of know where we're at in the queue, and I'm happy to answer any questions specifically about them as we go along. So, just starting with Springburg Park, um, that carried over from last year, that's utilizing the Conservation Futures Funds. There were three parcels on the, uh, adjacent to Springburg Park, uh, that, um, were also then adjacent to Forty-seventh Avenue, and so two of them have been purchased, and the properties have been, um, demolished, and the site's been cleared. Uh, the one that's in the middle has given the verbal agreement to sell, uh, right about the time when he agreed to sell, um, we'd asked Pierce County, in the past, they've processed those, um, and so they, one of their staff people that did that left, they have a new county attorney, and so, um, in order for us to meet the deadlines of Conservation Futures, we're processing that. So the city has provided a purchase and sale agreement, which hasn't been signed yet, because we just got the final address. Yes, yes, but he's agreed to sell, so... Yes, yes, but he's agreed to sell. So we're confident that that's gonna be occurring and, um, we, we plan to have the sale closed between the first two weeks of October with it being cleared through, uh, the county process by end of November so that it can meet with those Conservation Future deadlines. And that is carry forward from last year for their project. Mm-hmm, right. Uh, the next project down is, um, our park playground resurfacing, which is something that you support every year and it helps us just maintain our playgrounds in a safe structure. But I just wanted to note, under the status, that, um, one of the, we did, you know, replace surfacing for the Oak Brook and the American Lake playgrounds, which were both, um, rebuilt this year. But just to note that Kiwanis is donating a seventy thousand dollar playground. They've been working on some fundraising for the last year and a half, two years, and they're pretty proud of themselves and we're proud of them too. And so they're gonna be creating new playground structures at Kiwanis Park. And so it'll really fill those two circles and replace the swings. And so we'll be providing the surfacing under that, working with them in September. They might even ask some of you to come and help build it on a Saturday, the last Saturday of September. Harry Todd Waterfront Improvement Project, uh, Phase One and Phase Two, we've been working on that over the last few years. Because we were quite successful in many of our grants, we are combining those phases together. We have permission from the grant agencies because it's way more efficient from a planning, design and implementation. So we're at, uh, we've had the sixty percent design approved and so we're actually kind of moving towards ninety percent. We have submitted, uh, the, um, environmental permits. Uh, we're working on the city permits now. But, uh, those are going along. We anticipate getting those permits, everything done probably the first month or two of next year. Uh, then we will be bidding out before summer so we can catch those contractors at a good time and get on their schedule. But we wouldn't start till after the summer. We don't wanna lock that place up during the summertime because there's just nowhere else for those people to go that live in that neighborhood. So we'll be, um, looking at starting that in the, uh, fall of twenty twenty with anticipated being done before summer of twenty-one. Uh, the Fort Silicon Park Utility Project's underway, almost done. Uh, they're working on the sewer portion now. We anticipate that being done, uh, very soon. And, uh, that's a great project. We'll be, um, we've got water, sewer, power, uh, and then they'll be rebuilding Angle Lane from, uh, the Wahoop Lake Four Corners area up to Silicon Boulevard. We'll be redoing that. And then, um, the next project down, talks about Angle Lay, Lane South. We'll be finishing that, uh, restoration project from there down to Elwood, uh, in conjunction with that project. So utility portion's done. That allows us to, um, hook up all of those structures and buildings that are original to the site from the seventies and/or years before. And, um, uh, making those more functional and. Yep, yeah, 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 yeah. They're finishing the sewer, sewers now.
Can I, can I ask a question just for my edification? Did they do the, the water pipes on top of the sewer, are they in the same right of way or did they?
There's a great big wa, no, they're primarily down, the, the water line we actually did along the, um, west side, thank you, of Angle Lane. And so we really didn't, uh, tear up Angle Lane for the water. We wanted to run down that side because that goes from the Silicon Boulevard all the way to Elwood. So the sewers are smack dab in the middle of stuff and cutting through.
And that's what they're doing now.
Mm-hmm, they're doing that now. And, um, I'm not sure in conjunction, there's law as to how far apart the pipes have to be and deep. But it's quite a, you know, it's a big ol' wide hole and it's, you know, twelve feet deep or something, so you don't wanna fall in. So hopefully, you know, stayed away from those barricades that are telling you to stand back.
Is it big, big, big?
Well, we're, we're, yeah. It's gotta support the shop, the house, the future barn, the restroom by the, um, dog park that we're building and, uh,
Is that going all the way to Angle Lane too?
The sewer's just going to the Wahoop Lake, uh, Four Corners area, I call it, by the parking lot, mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
When it speaks of that it's also expanding.
Um, well, it's just, um, adding outlets and things where we need them, but the power lines are there now. And we've had them from Silicon Boulevard down to there, but it's just, I'm not sure exactly which, all the electrical pieces, but from the beginning, we were cleaning up all the utilities, rehooking up things from here to there, anything that got broken in the, in the, during construction, so. But we're not adding, we're not adding. No, no, we have capacity there. We've got some transformers and poles and so we're doing fine there. Uh, jumping right down to, um, Project fourteen, Fort Silicon Park and Angle Lane South Improvements. Uh, that's part of the RCO project. We have our grants. We're in construct, or we're in design now. Um, and then we'll do our permitting. And the idea is, um, that we would be, uh, going out to bid early next year with anticipated completion by the end of next year. And that basically is, um, putting, uh, the parking lot down at the end of Elwood, uh, and, uh, basically trailhead signage and things down there, re, rest, restoring Wahoop, or pardon me, Angle Lane, all the way up to, by the dog park parking lot, putting a restroom and plaza and gathering space there as well. So, no, really, tha- that's really the center of the park is in that corner, so, um, that'll be happening.
So would we be doing anything? In one of the areas, parking problem now, is, is Elwood from Angle to one?
Elwood from Angle to, oh, that back, the back corner area, yes.
So there's park boundaries running along there. Are, are we going to be doing anything that, that is like, make that kind of longer available for parking or?
Yeah, we've worked.
Create a boundary or something?
Mm-hmm, we've chatted with, um, Public Works Engineering who's helped us to figure out where the best place is to come in from with the parking lot, clean up those corners lighting so that it's not, right now it's really, the roads come in kind of at three different angles and there's shoulder parking and so that whole area's gonna be cleaned up a bit. In a perfect world, you could put another traffic island down there, but that's not part of this project. But we are gonna be working on making it safer to get in, um, areas not to park so that you don't have that backing in and out problem. But it hasn't totally been designed yet, so I don't have a, you know, something to show you. But we'll be bringing something to you once we have that designed laid out so you can see where we're going.
Yeah, if, if Elwood is one of the, city, the last hundred and fifty feet of it is unpaid.
Oh, right.
And four houses are on, on the, streets. Going, going back, back in there. Not gonna have a chance.
That's not gonna, no, that, that's not gonna, that's not part of this, the scope. I'm not sure that would probably be a part, since this was primarily recreation, outdoor recreation, um, local park project money, that probably wouldn't have flown with that, so. But, but we'll do our best on that corner to make it safer because right now it's really kind of, you know, funny little way. And that, one of the main purposes was to make that a safer corner. The Edgewater Park Master Plan, um, we started with that the end of last year. Uh, I've had a couple of community meetings on that, gathered a lot of information, had several alternatives, and we've got a preferred master plan that we're, we're finalizing. Um, again, there's several issues we're working out with Public Works Engineering regarding right of way and parking and one lanes and things like that. But that'll be coming, um, we'll be talking to the community and the park board again at the end of September. They don't meet in August, so they'll be meeting again at the end of September. We'll be inviting the community in to come and see what some of the conclusions were from all of those meetings. I did provide a drawing for you. And again, there's a little bit of work that still needs to be done, but that's a pretty good final, um, view of all of the different ideas. We heard a lot of things from a lot of folks on access and parking and safety and speed and security and things like that. But I did include that in case anybody had any specific questions. Um, really not prepared to share the whole thing with you tonight because that's, um, we will share that with you when it's, um, been finished through the community process and bring it to you for review and approval. Then we'll be taking a look at maybe, um, a phased project or here's the project in a whole, potential grant resources to offset that. And then maybe there's some low-hanging things that we can just do, uh, internally within our work programs to show the citizens and the community down there that, you know, we're ready to take some action down there. Um, the next project on there is, the next page is, uh, Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. And, um, Phase Two, which is basically, um, adding the restroom, two restroom facilities and a catering type kitchen inside there. And, um, we did have some drawings that went out to bid, only received one bid. It was ridiculously over budget from what we'd proposed. And so we just actually met last week. We'll be revising some of the things in there and, um, we anticipate it meeting our budget and our goals. And, uh, we'll be going out to bid, uh, first part of next month. Uh, and bringing that forward. I initially wrote on here, "Construction complete" because I'm an optimist and I thought that it would be. But after talking with the permitting people in the city as well as our architect, they said that probably it would be the first couple of months into the next year that we would be able to be completed. But it's a great time to do an indoor construction project because there'll be, hopefully we'll, um, find some, uh, contractors with sharp pencils that are wanting to work during that time of the year. So we have confidence in the project. It's, it's really gonna be beautiful when it's done.
What kind of functionality differences have been, are you gonna revise out?
Well, um, initially when we did the first, when we went out the first time, there were some things that were left off the plans. And so we had to go back to the contractors several times, extend the deadline, you know, how are you gonna connect the water? And then the power, there, eh, there were some problems with the plans. And so by the time it got to contractors, they were, it's a small project and they're really busy and so that's why I think we didn't have success, mm-hmm. So we have taken a couple of things out, like for instance, one of the things that we're gonna do that's really exciting is, so we have all this wood in the barns of old wood floors and ceilings that were in the barns. It's about two and a half inch tongue and groove. I mean, it's pretty amazing, sixteen feet long. So part of it was to mill that, and it's too thick to put on the walls, is to mill it and then install it. Well, if you're a contractor building restrooms and a catering kitchen, that's a little outside your pay grade. So I think that that was overwhelming for some of the contractors, but of course, we do know local lumbermen and women in our community. So we have, where we can just go get that done on our own and have the wood stockpiled there, ready for them. So we're basically going from a tongue and groove to shiplap, lingo. Uh, but it's gonna be beautiful. So the whole back wall of the kitchen will be, we'll use that for, we'll use it as, um, featured, design features in the restrooms. And so it'll really make that, that facility really beautiful inside. And so we're excited about that.
Have you, have you ever had anybody look at the inventory? Dave Betts suggested to me that that was, uh, probably three times as valuable as new lumber because you get lead credit for using it in new buildings.
You know, I don't know, I, I, I hadn't a lot of thought or talked about the lead credit, but we'll look into that. But Dave is the one that wanted, yeah, I'll buy it for you, I'll buy it from you for a buck and, you know, we'll sell it. So maybe we'll, maybe we'll sell it and raise money for the barns down the road when we're ready for it. But right now, we're gonna be utilizing it in, as a city resource for a city project, so. But Dave is a, is the lumberman that I was referring to and he, he has people out in the field that can help us in different ways, so.
Well, you know, maybe he would be amenable to marketing it and splitting it between the city and the Lakewood Community Foundation, so.
Or, yeah, or Partners for Parks or somebody, yeah, we'll take that. But again, I wanna see the city resources for the city projects and so. Yeah, okay, good to know. But that's interesting about utilizing that reclaimed wood for some credits. That's, um, yeah, so we'll look at that. That's, that's a great idea, Mayor. Um, the next project we have is, is Wordslake Improvements. Uh, we're working, excuse me, on our master plan for that. It's updating the master plan that was done ten years ago. I did include in your packet a copy of our expansion, which we applied for Conservation Futures Funds. Um, we, I believe are ranked high enough on the list, we'll be successful in getting that, so. Oh, it's on there. But, um, the idea is to, um, take the park from the park-city boundaries, which you can see, um, on page, do you want, can you pull that up? You have it, oh, you have it on yours, okay, I was just, yeah. So it's the next one. Um, so the park boundaries don't match up with the backside of the, uh, Lakewood Cinema, Old Lovitz Building property. And so, um, uh, she's working on, there we go. So the idea is to purchase the properties that you see that are hashed, hashed in red. Uh, some of those are, uh, partial properties that are owned by the cinema and they're interested in selling to us and working with us on that. And that is so that we can kind of go up to the backside of the theater. Right now, it's really the area where, um, it's kind of no manland for us and naughty stuff happens and stuff gets dumped and camps are created. So we're really trying to, um, have that space so that we can get around the water and over the water and create this, uh, trail system that gets people out there regularly. So again, when you get positive people doing positive things, then some of the negative things go away. So, um, we have two alternatives that we actually shared at, uh, Trail Day at the end of last month. And, um, but it, they're both very full and complicated to show you, both of them. It would have been hard on this, in this format. So, but we'll be finalizing that towards the end of September and bringing that your way as well. And, uh, looking at how we can add some elements to, again, encourage positive activities in those areas.
As a possible way to save money and reach the same goal, uh, have you explored, uh, purchasing an easement from them?
Yeah, yes, we have. And so depending.
Because it leaves, gives, they get to retain the square footage.
Correct. And, um, we worked through that as well. So if we weren't to receive the Conservation Futures funding for the purchase, then they're open to that as well. They don't like what's happening behind their buildings anymore than we like what's happening on the other side of our borders, so. Um, but we'll look at that as a possibility for all those different areas.
Do they have their own fencing back there? Is that something that they require, if you pay them money, they, they use some of those funds to?
I'm gonna show you real quick. They do have funding, or fencing.
They do, okay.
Yeah.
So it depends, so they just throw stuff over the back. Into this area. And it's, the wetland really is quite expansive in there, so it's, so it takes some special access to get up and on and over and around it. And then this is a separate parcel here, and it's the last developed parcel in this neighborhood area. And so we, the, the people that live there now, living underway, older adults that are really later in their years and with health and so they're o- open to selling it to us as well. And that provides us with, depending on what we do in this back corner, another access point.
Right.
Because right now we have, parents in this house there is actually quite wet right there and steep here. So it gives us some more flexibility for access, um, parking, et cetera, a new, a new access for this area. Not critical to the development, but it's a good time to purchase that and if we can get tons of help set it, then we're, we're doing well as well.
And more will come your way once we get that final master plan together. We'll share that with you.
Maybe the designated campground for the city.
And everything takes a little bit of time, so that's why, and so there'll have to be like some, uh, lot line adjustments and parcel changes and other kinds of things like that. So we'll, you'll be hearing more about this as we move forward with this project. Uh, and owners of the cinema are a group of sisters that live in California. And so they don't, really don't have any interest in doing much of anything there but collecting their rents. And so, um, so they'd be open to do that, huh? Yeah. Yeah. So I think they're, they'll be open to working with us because they don't wanna spend any, spend any more money either. Um, okay, the next project is Banners in Brackets and we've been working on that for the last couple of years. And, um, we'll be, um, getting, we have banners and we're replacing old banners. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Before you leave Parks and Land Acquisition, i- in looking at the, the map of Springbrook, uh, as we've acquired properties, the three, I'm thinking of the three new properties and I forget what the number of the street is that runs by there.
Forty-seventh.
Forty-seventh.
Mm-hmm.
The, you know, there's unusable, there's, there's the dead end of Forty-seventh is sixty feet. The apartment that's on the other side of Forty-seventh has a good deal of unusable property. Uh, it, it occurred to me that there, opportunity may exist to acquire a conservation or recreation easement on that property from the apartment and vacate portions of Sixtieth, which would give us another control, another two hundred feet of, of the creek. And it, i- if the world was perfect, it wouldn't be too expensive. Because it doesn't change the utility of the property that they have. You may even be able to vacate, the park side of half of that thirty feet and still allow them access. So you go down your dead end and we add thirty feet to the park on the left, they get thirty feet on the right, on the right for access that's in private. And then it, it dead ends at a point that allows additional sixty foot wide by maybe a hundred foot deep section of park right on the creek.
Do you, do you think north of the, there's a hundred feet?
Well, I don't know, it's, it's.
North of the apartment?
Uh, north of the apartments, there's probably a hundred feet to Creek Center, yeah, because it's a sixty.
On the lower side, you're talking about, by the swim property on the backside? Uh, like over the bridge on the other side, right?
On Forty-seventh off the end.
On the property of, of Ross and Riverline?
Yes. Well, on, on the, you see that, if you, if you look at a picture of that, you'd see that there's a, you know, there's a sixty foot easement right of way. Ex- extending over and through the creek that we never intended to develop with the bridge. extending over and through the creek that we never intended to develop with the bridge.
Oh.
So, that's sixty feet. It's probably sixty by a hundred. If we could obtain that as part of a deal where they get the right thirty feet of what they use for access and parking now and we vacate-
There's a driveway right here that they go down to some area down there. You can't really see it. So, we, we'll look at that and see how we can maximize that opportunity.
If you could similarly match that on the other side of the creek where we have this norm order property, but right away on Forty-seventh, it doesn't go anywhere, but it's a street end.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. We'll see, we'll-
I think you're saying we have at least sixty feet because we have a street end.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, it isn't a street end because it continues.
And we have, we'll talk about that, the restoration of that area at the finale of this, so we can chat about that.
Just say, you, don't, I guess the point is not any, to acquire anything specific except don't look, don't overlook additional opportunities to expand Springbrook Park and acquire frontage on the creek.
Yeah.
Making the street a barrier, making it part of the park.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at all of that. We'll bring that forward to you as well. Okay. I believe we are on project, the Chambers Creek Trail Planning and Development, which is O five at the bottom. And so, again, that was a project that the county and UP and the city have worked on for several years. The idea is to get a two and a half mile trail from Kobayashi and Phillips Road area all the way down to the other end on Chambers, the Chambers Bay side. And so, we are being able to combine three phases based on the grants that we've received and the allocation support from each person. So, I put a, just to give you an idea of what we're actually talking about because the other plan had quite a few other places. But we're looking at down there on the, this would be the east side of the drawing. There's the Phillips Road side on the City of Lakewood side, which is this lower portion, and Chambers, and Kobayashi on the other side. So, this yellow, that yellow little connector is the first bridge. So, you go from Phillips down, cross over. Now, you're on the UP side. You cross through Kobayashi all the way down the yellow path to where the second bridge would, which would bring you back on the Lakewood side. And although that path is there, it would be, we'd enhance the whole thing. So, that would give you two and a half miles. So, right now, we're working on design, additional permitting. Some permits been done, all the SEPA and all of that's been done. And right now, we're working on what's the best method to design and construct, whether it's an RFP, whether it's an RFQ, whether we work with the county's bridge team to provide some additional support, construction management, et cetera. So, all that's coming together. The city will be asked to sign an interlocal agreement, which you actually kind of already looked at about a year and a half ago. The City of Lakewood and University Place both reviewed it. And then it went forward to the county and they wanted a different format. And so, and it didn't include a couple of things that we needed to have. So, that's okay. So, now it'll be more comprehensive. It'll look longer at the whole project, not just the design and development. And we'll be bringing that back to you probably in another month or so. County's doing their final review of it. So, that's very exciting. And then gateways, we're continuing on our gateway program. Probably, if you look on the plan, two thou, we'd finish three this year. The next one we're looking at is Eighty-fourth and Tacoma Mall Boulevard. That's the one that's kind of up from Wards Lake by that, across the street from the Ferry Store where there's a gas station. However, the next three are Thorn Lane, Union, and Berkeley with all the JBLM, Wash Dot projects. And so, one of the things that we may do is see about getting the Berkeley done while there's construction going on so that we can get that done in a really safe manner. And so, those four might be switched a little. We'll make sure that we contact you in advance and make sure you're fine with all of those changes. But, but that's going to be happening. Those are about the next four that'll, that will occur. And they'll be in conjunction with the Wash Dot, JBLM project that's going on right now. So, we'll be coming back to you with more details on that. But that's very exciting to keep that gateway project. And so, you have also in your packet a map, which you've seen many times, but the blues are starting to outnumber the reds, which means blue is complete and red's on its way. So, so that's fun. You can see where those are coming from and where they're going. And then just as a little, this, I didn't give you a copy of this, but this was in the city manager's report Friday before last, I believe. And it does have this section, and this was probably talking more about the trail, but it does have, it kind of just shows you where those gateways are going to be. And I was reading his report and said, oh, this is a good thing to share. So, you've got it. But anyway, just talks a little bit about, this is going to be the Murray Road one that goes down to the industrial park. This is Berkeley, not there, but you can see it's the one that's going to be the first up there. And then this is Thorn Lane. So, this Thorn Lane one is actually not going to have the gateway in it because of the design, it's going to be concrete. So, you can drive over it and run into it. But it's going to connect to the walking path and a biking path. And so, at the end of Thorn Lane, whenever it gets done and we see what's there, then we'll look to install that final one there. So, anyway, I can pass this around. It's very fancy, but you have it in your packet. And then Service Club sign, that's something we've been working on and talking about. And so, we just found out not long ago that we do have the right of way that we need. It is the city's in front of Domino's and the, um, I beg your pardon, Long Beach. Thank you Cafe. And so, we're going to clean that corner up and we'll install that sign. And that'll be happening before the end of this year, so. We're the broken brick, it's our broken brick. So, we get to fix it.
And our little rockwork, we got other parts.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that area cleaned up. And it'll look nice. And it'll be a good kickoff for that Service Club sign that we've worked with the Service Club members on and have presented to those different groups so they know what's happening. And then what's coming up is park equipment. That's just a never-ending story, replacing things that are old and broken or vandalized and fixing those things. The Fort Stilicon Park Playground, that was a project we started on. We were looking primarily at ADA and doing some specialized recreation areas and then looking at the big playground that we have. It's getting to its end of its life cycle. What do we need to do to repair and replace? Although it's in really, really good shape. And then there was a Service Club coming around talking about a spray park. And that really probably isn't going to be economically feasible based on what they were able to contribute. And so, now we'll be going back and looking at how we can utilize those resources to finalize that project. We figured this could be used as a match if that was going to be a project that came forward. But that particular one isn't going to work for this. So, they've moved on and we will too. We'll finish up some ADA access in American Lake. We have some resources to do that and to make the park down to the beach accessible. That's something that we need to do. We'll make best use of those resources to add some amenities from our past master plan. And then the two final projects here are the Fort Stilicon Park turf field and infills. That was resources we just got contacted by Department of Commerce, who is the keeper of the grant. So, we'll be starting work on the infills first. And then we'll be looking at the Clover, Springbrook Park Clover Creek restoration. And that will include not just the restoration, but the enhancement of those areas that we've purchased that are just sort of barren right now, and the swim property on the other side, and anything in between that we find that we can make use of to utilize all those resources that we have.
Restoration is for children?
Uh, not, not with funding, but they're totally on our team for the restoration part. They're super excited about working and hands-on and providing some expertise. Oh, yeah. They want to put logs in the, in the creek and we just want them to be in the right spot. So, we'll make sure that we have the right people, the right ologists giving us the information as to where things need to go. And then we'll let them help with the board, the stumps. And we've got stumps, so we know where to, we've got the material. We'll help them move it, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Dodsworth? Thanks for the update.
Lots going on. Thank you.
Lot going on.
Thanks for your support. We really appreciate it.
And an economic development update, making money. Ms. Newton and Ms. Spear.
All right, good evening. We have three fairly comprehensive documents to cover this evening. And so, so you may wish to choose certain ones to focus on this evening. And I'm absolutely open to discussions on each. We expect that there'll be follow-up on at least the information on housing as well as Western State Hospital in some of the council meetings to come. And so, if you're okay with it, I'll just go ahead and briefly go over each of the documents and then we'll go from there. And so, the first one up is the strategic plan for economic development. And this is based on a framework, taking into consideration the Growth Management Act as well as the countywide, for countywide planning, including the multi-county planning policies, as well as looking at supporting manufacturing and industrial centers, business and job centers, leveraging public investment, supporting education training, as well as sustainable low-impact development and responsive and efficient business licensing and permitting. So, that's kind of the framework we were looking at to base the plan on. And we'll focus on our strategic areas for, for development and redevelopment. And supporting the growing primary industries that have the greatest potential for good jobs, including manufacturing and industrial, as well as healthcare, technology, professional services, and construction. Also, supporting JBLM in partnership with SSMCP and connecting businesses to government contracting and carrying out the strategic, city strategic plan, which includes a goal of promoting and supporting a robust and dynamic local economy. So, starting out with the introduction, which is on page forty-seven, the focus is on economic vitality as being a critical element to the citizens and our businesses. And followed by the vision and goals, which is the council vision and economic development goal and its objectives. And then, following on page forty-eight, we take a look at Lakewood's competitive advantages, which includes location, amenities, workforce, education, employment, culture, incentives, and infrastructure. And then turning to page fifty-one in your packet, we take a look at some of the key economic opportunities here in Lakewood. Looking at Lakewood and the retail sales leakage presents two, two things to look at with that. Looks at the retail trade gaps as well as the surplus. Both are opportunities to fill a need for the community and create some synergy and collections of like retailers in order to pull in more shoppers from beyond our borders. And downtown with a future development concentration of perhaps twenty-two hundred residential dwellings, almost two or three million square feet of commercial space and adding seven thousand jobs. And then, turning to page fifty-three in the packet, talks about elements to support the geographic strategic focus areas. That's including our business retention and expansion program. We continue our commitment to outreach and our partnerships and cultivating those relationships and improving the business health of our community, continuing to examine contaminated sites, enhancing the database for our businesses, and working with the chamber on the new entrepreneurial program for youth and researching other programs to support our local businesses. Media and promotion is also a big part of what we do. So, we'll continue to produce many documents to support that, including the Lakewood Index, brochures, economic indicators, and so forth. And producing authored articles as well for, from local to international publications. And of course, our new Build Your Better Here campaign, which we're very excited about. Okay. Then moving on to some of the strategic areas that we're focusing on, I'll just briefly touch on each of those, beginning on page fifty-five in your packet. Of course, the Lakewood Downtown Plan is one of our very highest priorities, filling spaces and focusing on mixed-use developers and development within the downtown, as well as cultural and boutique businesses, particularly in the Colonial Center area, building a new library based on funding, and infrastructure for a new park and Green Street Loop and so forth. Pacific Highway, our focus is on building, building on our infrastructure that we've already put into the area of more than ten million dollars, new hotels and restaurants, and working on what we're calling the Lakewood Landing Project, which is a thirty-acre redevelopment and relocating Wash Dot to another location. And perhaps doing a corridor study from the Lakewood Station to the transit station in town center. And then on to Woodbrook, which is another main focus for, for us due to the demand for industrial and manufacturing space. So, building on our-
Mr. Whalen?
Yes, sir.
Good question. I'm looking at page fifty-five as part of the strategic plan.
Yes.
The view of economic policies to support small local businesses, review possible incentives for business to attract and relocate downtown. I know this is the project you're looking at Q one twenty. But what are the types of things you're going to be looking at to develop? Do you have an idea?
Sure. So, small businesses that we're looking to attract. So, local businesses that fill the need for the community.
What kind of incentives are looking to try to get that locate there?
Sure. So, incentives that we can offer include some of the, the new housing strategies that we're looking at. So, that's part of like the mixed-use development as an example. And then we're exploring the types of incentives that we could use to attract retailers. Some of the incentives that we already have in place, such as, you know, no impact fees. Now, we're looking at the mitigation is one thing that we do have, but we have been pretty flexible in that. And, and we're also taking into account the previous use that was there. And so, in actuality, it's not really as much of an impact to the businesses as we first thought it would be. So, but we continue to look at that as we go, go along. But we'll, we'll look at incentives that could be used in regard to retail as well.
What we can do to create incentives, kind of this incentive to build those spaces.
Right. And the other thing we're noticing, when we start to get certain concepts in the town center, such as Ulta and entertainment, that also creates more of a draw for other retailers to come in as well. Okay. Okay, so Woodbrook. So, and Woodbrook is also an opportunity zone. And we are working with developers on tenant attraction for the spec buildings and facilitating the large industrial warehouse projects. And then, moving on to the International District on page fifty-nine, we do have banners that will be hanging in that area. We'll also be looking at signage, art baskets, and other ways to, designated as a special place. So, we'll be working with Public Works and Parks to identify what things we could do going forward and potentially doing a corridor study at some point. And then the Lakewood, or Lakeview Kendricks.
Yes. How does the fact that was kind of unanticipated what would happen with the Swatley and it's being developed now as a logistics piece to do that? Since right in the center of the International District, and I don't necessarily see how that is any in, in anything that's on the strategic plan here. Because that, there's, that has the potential to move across Eighty-fourth to where there's a vacant property. And instead of getting this kind of development, you'll get that type of development. And we decided what we want. I mean, the Swatley was huge parcel. So, the fact that it's being developed as what it is is probably the best use of something that brought it back today. Whereas International District is more of a South Tacoma way. District is more of a South Tacoma Way, a hundred yards in the direction, or he's over to the Wrangell. But how do we keep the International District from getting chopped up into several international districts? It's trying to function the market.
We could do a corridor study. It's, it's, it's mentioned in the plan as something for consideration.
So, I know there's a lot of pressure for, in the market for logistics centers. It's pretty obvious, and you can't build one in Seattle, so keep going out and building them all around, and as retail dies, logistics centers are more important. But looking at Woodbrook, do we have anybody, has anybody shown any interest in putting something out there where they actually make anything? And if they have, what do they need that we haven't been able to offer?
Yes, we have, we are working with tenants that will be doing manufacturing, but as far as what we can offer or not offer in relation to other areas, one of the things that they consider, for example, the Fredrickson area being close to other, their suppliers and vendors, so that's, that's something that they do consider, as far as something that we can offer that others cannot, or maybe we could have preference, that's, I'm not really sure, something to think about.
If there's something lacking, they say, yeah, we'd, we'd move in here, but we need massive fiber optic cable, or we'd move here except, except, yeah, with the power rates better, or we need a Gatchel gas line, or we would be here except we need a certain skill at, are you hearing any, anything like that, so?
Not really. Workforce, I mean, Pierce County has a pretty robust workforce, and skills with more training facilities coming online as, in terms of, well, for example, the advanced manufacturing at Clover Park, I think that there's a concerted effort through several workforce advisory groups through the colleges to try to fill those gaps for skills, and I think it's a countywide thing, and also because of the lack of land further north, folks are looking to come to the south sound. We're in a great strategic location because of our location to the port and connection to major transportation, so I think that we're well, well-suited to attract those jobs. It's just that, I think we also need to go out and let them know that we would welcome them to be here, and we'll help them to coordinate workforce and, and so forth, and be a support for them.
We feel the increase EDB does obviously, it's ready and looks at the county as just a matter of trying to keep educating on what we have to offer.
And, right, one of the other things that I do is connect the manufacturers that are moving out of Tacoma or from other areas, to those developers that are actually doing the developments in Lakewood, and so they have those connections that way, and working direct, directly with them on Build a Suit, for example, the sooner they can get in, the better they're able to provide the types of facilities that they need.
I'm jumping back a slide, if I may.
Sure.
Are you hearing anything close to Sub area plan adoption that might lead to our first mixed-use project in Central Villas District? We just need to land one somehow, some way.
Yeah.
We need to run through dog and pony shows to folks who are doing it in Proctor or University Place, or wherever else, and try to capture the first one somehow.
Right. We are, we're talking to a number of mixed-use developers. A lot of them are extremely busy, so it's difficult to get them engaged, however, and we're finding that, you know, the multifamily tax exemption is something that is really needed in order to keep the costs down and have those projects pencil, because the construction costs are such that it's just as expensive to construct a building here as it could be in Seattle, as an example, but they're not getting the rents that you can get in Seattle. So, I think that the more incentives that we can provide, the better, but there is interest, and the more we can get the word out and create, and tell those developers that we really want them to come here, and invite them to come in, but yeah, I, I agree with you, we need to, we definitely do more outreach with regard to the mixed use. Yes. Yeah.
But what can we do to help you be more intentional about the invite? We need to identify, brainstorm, and say, Rush has done two great projects, Proctor, Torino guys have done some good stuff, let's pay a planning, let's meet with those guys and take two or three of us, whatever else it takes to say, we would love to meet with you, and here's what we have to offer, I would love to have you guys here, you'd be great for Lakewood.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think that the more you can get the top-level folks that can make those decisions, and, you know, talking as a group to those developers, I think the better off. So like, for example, talking to a mixed-use developer that's interested in redeveloping the QFC, if we have our director at the table, our mayor, our city manager, folks that can make decisions, and that can talk to them, I think that's definitely helpful. Yeah.
Somehow we can help, or, you know, you need leads, I think you got wholesome, you just need that. Yeah, totally. I've heard, I'm still letting you know, but the QFC is under contract, the two parcels are under contract.
Yes, they are under contract.
They are under contract.
Yes.
They are. So, whether they develop something ultimately, it's under contract or feasibility, I think, right now.
Right. That's correct. And Mr. Bure has been talking directly with them, I believe, too. Yes.
There have been multiple meetings with one firm out of the Portland area that's interested in the site. I have a meeting later this week, we're going to have some further discussions. I think they're coming to the realization that a seven-acre site in an urban area with the existing building configuration is not the highest and best use of the property. Combine that with a building that's full of asbestos and lead, and is old and continues to deteriorate, there are problems that begin to question whether or not repairs are even the most efficient way of handling the situation. I have approached with them the idea of mixed-use development, we'll see where this goes. They have a very tight timeframe, I don't know what this is going to look like yet, but they're running into some due dates, as well as the appeal period for the current notices and orders come due on August the sixteenth. So, it's a bunch of dates coming into play, and it's all done intentionally to see if we can't have something happen on that site, given the fact that the city's made significant investment on that corner, not only on Colonial Plaza, but also on Gravely Lake Drive and Bridgeport Way.
But it sounds like you made a lot of contracts, and we can still do the intentional, let's get some other players in there to take a look at what we want to see happen, figure out the way to incentivize. That's what needs to happen, you gotta get the first mixed-use project in there.
Yeah, you know, I, I think that incentivizing is, is something that's, we're at a critical juncture, not just in the downtown, but throughout the city about taking a look at it, and, you know, Newton does a good job with the incentives that we've created and allowed to be used, but, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, we're scheduled to have a retreat here, you know, in a little over a month, and, and I really think that spending some time really talking about both what do we want to do in terms of new incentives and strategies around this, and, and also talk a little bit about to what extent are we disincentivizing some things to do that. And I think that that's maybe a more important discussion for us to have than to begin to talk about very long-term transportation funding options, because transportation funding act just might even be a little bit premature, because we don't know what's going to happen with the car tabs, and that's all that's, because that's an election-type thing, and we might be better, spend our better time on the retreat around what can we do to assist with the strategic economic development plan, and do a gap analysis of where do we, where, 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 what, where do we have a gap in policy that's, that, that we can fix, or should fix?
Right. Do you have something, Mr. Simpson?
I did, but I think Mr. Bransiter is, is a good point. What I would ask would probably be better put in a retreat, where we talk about incentives.
So, I guess for that retreat, we're going to want legally possible incentives and known barriers.
Exactly.
Anecdotal barriers, we're gearing up.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know kind of what we're getting at.
Yeah. Right?
All right.
Move forward, please.
All right, moving forward. All right, so, let's see, Lakeview Kendrick, that's another neighborhood that has an opportunity zone, and also, gentleman is assembling up to ten acres for a redevelopment project in that area. And North Clear Zone, our priority is tactical tailor and purchasing the building once we have funds to do so, hopefully this fall, if all goes well, and then also reaching out to other Phase One companies and purchasing those properties dependent on funding as well. And then, on page sixty-one of your packet, talks about Spring Brook Neighborhood. We did make one error up, we have actually over eight million in infrastructure improvements that has been made by the city of Lakewood, and, including the completion of one-twenty-third to allow for redevelopment and movement of truck traffic on and off of Forty-seventh, and provide for additional circulation, and consideration of additional industrial zoning in that area, and also looking at a possibility of a community center, which is the highest priority for, for that neighborhood, or for those residents in that neighborhood. I believe that they're pre-leasing right now, yes. Yes.
Are they done?
No, they're not done.
Almost.
Not get done until October. We have been approving final certificates of occupancies, building by building, building or structure B got their CFO last week, so they have two, and so they can fill up those two. There's a total of, I think, four major buildings that have to be approved, as well as a bunch of ancillary structures, including garages, parking spaces, and site development work. And that's being hot, carefully monitored right now, because it's tied to their multifamily tax exemption, and that has to be filed at the appropriate time, and so there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes with that one.
Okay, then Telecom, city has what, over eighteen million dollars in infrastructure improvements, so we continue upgrading Union as money, as money becomes available. There is a twenty-lot PDD in process, and of course, the two interchanges, a potential new library, and also a potential corridor study in the future. And at some point, we will also revisit the Lake City area as an additional area for redevelopment. Okay. So that, the following documents are just the background documents to support the strategic plan, and then I was going to move on to housing, if there's nothing else on the strategic plan.
If you don't mind, Council Mayor, I'd like to add two points that came up in the discussion. Mr. Bransiter spoke about South Tacoma Way. We continue to have issues with problem of zoning, used car sales, illegal vehicle storage and repairs, CSRT is constantly having to monitor and enforce regulations in that area between Eightieth Street and Five Twelve, so that's something that I suspect that we might come back and take a look at as a part of a future work plan item, is revisiting the zoning along that section of South Tacoma Way to promote the type of development that Mr. Bransiter spoke about. The other thing I would point out, and we sometimes fail to see this, but the abatement process does stimulate redevelopment, and I've seen projects as a result of redevelopment, and we've torn things down, the lot was vacant for a period of, of up to two years, but we have seen redevelopment take place. So just an FYI, that goes on, and we will continue to see that. Thank you for letting me interrupt.
Thanks.
Okay.
We have an approved one on Custer Road that was part of a conditional use permit, and that one went very well, but some of the others are pre-existing ones that continue to be a problem for us.
Okay. All right, so housing, as a part of the Strategic Plan for Economic Development Goal, council adopted an objective to enhance and diversify the housing stock and improve multi-generational community assets, so we continue to want to increase homeownership, as well as minimize non-conforming uses, and actively advance a condominium regulation reform. In addition, looking at public safety, health and welfare, will increase in proactiveness in terms of abatement, code enforcement, and housing safety. Included here are three new funding opportunities that we'll be taking a look at with you, House Bill fourteen oh six for affordable and supportive housing, as well as nineteen twenty-three for urban residential building capacity, and five-three-three-four, which is the condominium liability reform. And then we have many ongoing major housing efforts effective, affecting and led by the city of Lakewood, the consolidated plan, rental housing, multifamily tax exemption, continuum of care, and also, we are beginning to look at potential low-interest rehabilitation loan program with Harborstone, and working with SSMCP Housing Task Force on rental housing for service members to make it more affordable. In terms of House Bill fourteen oh six on page eighty-three of your packet, we will be coming back to you on this. There, this is a revenue sharing program for local governments, and, which provides up to a point oh one four-six percent in local sales tax and use credited against the state sales tax. It's not an increase in sales tax for the consumer, and the tax credit is available in increments of point zero zero seven-three percent. There's a chart that shows the, the dollar amounts. Qualifying local taxes can be levied, and a qualifying local tax must be adopted by July thirty-first, twenty twenty. Okay? Lakewood has not yet adopted any of the qualifying local taxes listed, and is currently only able to collect a point zero zero seven-three percent share. The tax credit must be spent on projects to serve low income below the sixty percent of the area median income, and it must be in place for twenty years. A county or city may enter into an ILA with one or more counties, city or the public housing authority to carry forward the program.
It's restricted to housing purposes. Mr. Bulkey. Mr. Bulkey.
So I've asked that this be discussed. I think we should agree to move forward with the resolution of intent that we keep it. Otherwise, it just goes to the county. And my thinking, at least initially, is our needs are more along the lines of rehabilitation of housing rather than construction of new. And the amount that we have is not going to be enough to build much in the way of new if when you do it, most units are $400,000 to $500,000 now if you do it through a public process. So, I mean, it would take you 18 years to get to be able to even contribute to one unit. So I think we should go with the resolution pronto. And then and then work on the ordinance and then have some discussions around how we would want to spend it. We, and I changed my mind on this originally. I thought, well, we'd just leave it in with the county and they can pool it and do some things. But the more I thought about it and the more I looked at it, I was, I'm now under the impression that we already have an allocation committee because we do the 1%. We already set it up that they do a portion to housing. This has different rules. These are restricted by the legislature as to what we can use it for. But they can certainly be informed of that and create another pot, and they could plug it into their system. And even into next year for the 2021, 22 budget cycle. And go from there. They could actually even do it probably on shorter notice than that. You just have to meet those guidelines of 60, under 60%. But I think there's some opportunities in here for us that we could get some bang for the buck on the rehab side, perhaps. I don't know where else. I mean, I'll entertain other ideas, too, but I don't think I don't think construction of new units is, even with the ability to bond it, I'm not sure the construction of new units is a worthwhile endeavor, given that, you know, you're at a million something for 20 years.
Just, you know, just considering this thinking out of day job, I see every human service and housing contract that comes through the county to check it for merit. And while they have merit, there's no great plan. Everything comes through with restrictions on it, and it's peanut buttered out. I think we, I agree with Mr. Bulkey. We probably can do more with it locally by targeting it and doing something efficiently. I said, just not a suggestion, this is where we should go, but for example, if you get $80,000 to $100,000, you could do eight to 10 low-income seniors roofs. They own their house. There's no way they can, they don't have an income stream that will support a loan. And the housing stock is going to deteriorate if it's not preserved. So there are things that we could target here with that little bit of money that would help low-income people help our housing stock and I think be actually visible and measurable. So if there's so if there's no, if there's no objection, I think we've forged forward on it and we can go along the path that Mr. Bulkey has suggested. And we always have a chance to consider the details of the ordinance and how we're going to decide and what we're going to decide, so. But I think we, I think we send a message if we do it earlier rather than later. And there's, and there's, and there's, actually, there's, I think, there's this, there's some strange quirks in this legislation that may be worked out in unintended consequences, but actually taking it may improve the county's ability to have increases in the future. Just the way that ratios work. Limits it to begin with, but increases the ability to getting, yeah. So it will be played with, so. So feel free to forge forward on that one.
Okay, so then there, did you have something else? And there's a draft resolution starting on page 85. And then some frequently asked questions. And then on page 90 of your packet, there is some discussion on House Bill 1923 with regard to urban residential building capacity. So this is an opportunity for the city to receive grants from the Department of Commerce and adopt ordinances to increase residential capacity by taking certain defined actions by April 1st, 2021. So if adopted by that time, these actions are not subject to appeal under SEPA or GMA. The, they're open to populations greater than 20,000. And five actions which Lakewood has already done are highlighted or bolded in on the top there. And then two other actions that are in process or pending under 18A, the 18A update. Okay, so also cities that want to develop their own approaches to address housing challenges listed above are also eligible to receive funding of $100,000 for a local housing action plan if adopted by that April 1st, 2021 date. And then it has some information on what should be included. And talks a little bit about potentially, which I mentioned a little bit earlier in the strategic plan, doing a corridor study between Lakewood Station, Transit Station, and the Town Center Transit. And then on page 91, there is some information on 5334, which is condominium liability reform. And under this, there's implied warranties for the construction of the condominium, which were modified. And new construction will be in accordance with applicable building codes generally accepted in the state of Washington and reducing liability of owners. We do not have a lot of condominium development, so it'd be nice to see more of that potentially in Lakewood. Okay, and then just moving on to 92, talks a little bit about the five-year consolidated plan. The plan establishes local priorities consistent with national objectives and established by HUD. And we do require that consolidated plan in order to qualify for CDBG Home and Emergency Solution Grant. And let's see, the consolidated plan, there is a new updated plan focused on the very similar needs that we've been working on that will be done by the end of this year. We're focusing on affordable housing choice, reducing homelessness, and increasing stability for all residents. And then on page 93, improving infrastructure is also a focus. And then there are a couple of charts that show, or tables that show the funds that we've received and applications. And 94 gets into rental housing safety program and dangerous building abatement program with our goals and some numbers for the year. And also abatement watch list. I will mention that the rental housing safety program did receive a municipal excellence award from AWC in 2019. And then on 95, there is a map showing the abatements in Lakewood. And then following on to page 96, talks about the multifamily tax exemption program, which we've discussed previously. And the following page shows on 97, all of our multifamily tax exemption projects. And then on 98, talks about the Continuum of Care, which is a partnership with Tacoma Lakewood in Pierce County and a strategic plan for homelessness. The major funders are listed in that as well. And down at the bottom is a heat map that shows the concentrations of unsheltered population in Pierce County. And then I don't know about the exact numbers, but doesn't look like there's quite as many, perhaps.
So
No problem.
I know it's a little bit beyond your reach.
Yes.
As far as your responsibilities, your job goes, but on the abatements, is there, maybe Mr. Brewer will have a better answer on this. We're over seven months into 2019, and there's two dots on the, for completed in 2019 on that chart, where there's 25 for 2018. It's a pretty dramatic difference.
This map needs to be updated, I'm sorry. Also, there's several very difficult abatements that we have ongoing right now. Carwin Village Mobile Home Park. And then also the QFC property, which has both taken up a significant amount of staff time. The list that you have there for the watch list is incomplete. There's approximately 13 other abatements currently underway. I can give you a more up-to-date version of that. That list contains a significant number of commercial properties along Bridgeport Way in addition to existing single-family residences throughout the city of Lakewood. So I'm not sure that we're going to end up with 32 abatements for 2019, but there will be a considerable number of abatements underway here soon. I can tell you that the building official in his first month has had five hearings on abatements. So we've certainly picked up the pace. I think really Carwin Village gave us a real run. We have some outstanding issues still with the Health Department on sewers that we'll be meeting with them next week on, and that's complicating things. So we're moving forward on these. So my apologies for some of the information being out of date.
On Carwin Village, you said on sewers, you mean the septic?
Excuse me, septic, yes.
Okay, so there's still being non-responsive?
Found out last week that we didn't know this, but the property owner failed to inform us that he's had 20 failures on 38 mobile home units. And it wasn't until we found that information, spoke with the Health Department, that they said, yes, that is correct. And our response was, well, why hasn't anyone told us? And why hasn't the Health Department moved forward with some sort of action to compel them to connect to sewers? And we have a main line on 84th Street. This is going to be a part of the appeal process. These issues are going to come forward. And this is an area that came out sort of unexpectedly from the blue in the last couple of weeks, Mr. Mayor.
Is the Health Department currently cooperating?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
When did that start?
About two weeks ago. I'm not trying to be facetious.
No, you don't have to. All you have to do is be factual, and it sounds facetious. Please continue.
All right, so page 99 shows total persons counted that are sheltered and unsheltered. And I meant, as I mentioned, the plan will be completed by the end of 2019. And then moving on to page 100. As I mentioned, we are talking to, beginning conversations with Harborstone on a potential low-interest rehabilitation loan program, as well as continuing working with SSMCP and their efforts and their housing task force in providing adequate affordable housing for their service members. And that concludes the housing portion of the packet. Moving on to Western State Hospital. So DSHS is proposing a major upgrade to Western State Hospital. Estimated cost for the upgrade is $800 million. Proposal is to build a 250 to 300-bed forensic hospital and a 160-bed civil commitment hospital on the current Lakewood site. Upgrade, given the age and current structures tied to the loss of the hospital accreditation and certification, there needs to be some changes out there. Governor is looking to transform the hospital services for mental health to forensic centers of excellence by the year 2023. Existing conditions, under the current conditions there, the hospital currently has about 850 beds, serving 20 Western Washington counties and approximately 2,300 employees. I will mention that we will be meeting with DSHS next week to get an updated strategy and map on their direction. We will likely need to do environmental on the project. And it's not sure, there may be a debate over who the lead agency will be on that environmental review. The city has been very active in scoping, and we'll be discussing on how that fits into our regional planning as well. And then on page 102, there's a map.
Stop there for a minute.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brewer, would you explain what the options are on the environmental review as far as lead agency goes? What our interests might, how our interests might be best served?
Well, first of all, our current ordinances require that any master development or master plan for the Western State Hospital call the city out as being the lead agency. So then basically, the city of Lakewood has control of the preparation of the EIS. There's going to be some dispute about that. I would imagine that they're going to want to be lead agents. We will probably have some discussion about co-lead agency. I'm not opposed to that. But that's going to be an issue that is going to come to the surface very quickly. Another topic was, once we start the EIS, is the scoping process. The scoping process will talk about what specific topics are going to come out of the EIS. What would the alternatives look like? One of the alternatives in my mind would be that it be located somewhere else. And that should be a point of discussion in the EIS itself, as well as the do-nothing option. So those are some of the things that will be coming up. So that's why the whole environmental process is so important, that we get in front of this, because that will dictate much of what occurs with the master plan as we move along.
Under current statute, don't we have, under current state law, don't we have the ability to be the lead agency?
We have the ability to be co-lead agency. But, you know, in previous issues with Western State Hospital, the fact that they have had such a poor process for master planning, past city councils wanted that the city have lead agency status for any master plan approval. So that will be something that we will discuss. And I'd have to go back and check the state statute on, you know, appointment of lead agency. But I can assure you that it's in our code. And then we also have the ability to be co-lead agency with DSHS.
Mr. Simpson?
When you go through an EIS process, one of the options is a do-nothing option. You just leave the thing alone as it currently exists, and then you'd have to perform upgrades.
Can that also lead to a discussion about perhaps Western State Hospital would be better served? better served, you would be?
That could also be another option within the EIS process, yes.
Mr. Ranseter?
Yeah, so, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I would be very hesitant about being too ready to accept co-lead agency status. I think that's actually, I think that's a fight worth having. You know, given that, you know, the, and while we didn't have an option with it, but given the EIS debacle that the Department of Transportation did on the point defiance bypass, you know, not being the lead's agency to include what are the things that are going to be looked at to do that. And I know it's in our code, and we should, you know, we should insist on that. And that, you know, so while, you know, you, I guess, feel that you could comfortably be a co-lead agent, I'd rather you didn't put yourself in that situation, put us in that, I think. It's, you know, the state is a gorilla, and we're a spider monkey, and we're not going to do, being co-lead, saying they were co-lead agencies isn't actually going to work that way.
Spider monkey can be faster and smarter. So, Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Dave, do we have any idea, I mean, when I'm reading here, and for the information provided, it's now eight hundred and something beds, or whatever the case, most of which are empty, that it was built clearly for a different time. You walk through the campus, and there's, especially towards the west, there's just empty buildings or little-used buildings in some cases. So the idea, when I hear forensic, it's essentially a jail. It's going to have to be a very secure facility, so I'm, you know, my thought process goes, well, they build, if they build up and they build a secure facility, their footprint should get a lot smaller. And are they anywhere, which means shove them if they intend on staying, we shove them up by Silicon Boulevard to the west. But do they have any idea what they're doing?
We will find out. We will have more information...
We will have more information on August twenty-first about what their intended plans are. I don't know right now. In the past, the discussion has focused on building new forensic facilities on the golf course property to the north, and then leaving the existing buildings vacant, which is not satisfiable. It's not acceptable to the city whatsoever. And that position has been very clear. And one of the things I'm a little concerned with is that they talk about reuse of existing buildings, but I'm real concerned about they're not spending enough time on reuse of those buildings and what that would look like. So that's another issue that will get covered in not only the EIS, but also in the future land use approvals for this project. And then we also have a zoning code amendment coming forward to the back portion, going, moving that from OSR two to OSR one. That's supposed to start here pretty soon. So there's a lot of moving parts, and just stay tuned for the ride.
Okay, all right. So one oh-two just has a map showing basically the acreage, basically two-hundred-and-sixteen acres, the number of buildings and so forth, and a little bit of detail on the Oak Ridge, which is a facility for juvenile rehabilitation, currently serving approximately twenty resident youth. And of course, there's open space, Oak Brook, commercial, our Fort Stillcome Park and residential all surrounding the Western State Hospital grounds. And then on page one oh-three of your packet, just talks a little bit about the infrastructure, aging water system, and as well as sewers. Sewer along Stillcome is fine, but anything within the property will likely have to be replaced going forward. If, should Western State Hospital relocate and abandon any of the buildings there, we will require a plan for removal and disposal of the vacant buildings to avoid safety issues and blight. And then we talk a little bit about impacts. The economic impacts that are shown here are at a Pierce County level, and talking about labor and value for that workforce. We are in the process of looking at more detail on what the impacts are for the city of Lakewood specifically. Should a new eight-hundred-million-dollar hospital be built, permit fees would be substantial, probably three million or more dollars, and there'd be significant impact on staff and likely require some sort of contracting services in order to accomplish all the tasks. And both our police department and West Pierce hold contracts with Western State Hospital as well. And then on page one oh-four, it just shows a few figures there showing the hospital person crimes, as well as a number of adult family homes where they're located and the police districts. And within the districts that cover the Western State Hospital area, on page one oh-five shows the most common types of crime in those areas. And then following on to the current operational issues, I think we touched on that a bit. The hospital was decertified and lost federal funding. State stepped in and covered that, as well as, we have been working with Western State Hospital for a number of years to try to get an updated master plan. The master plan was originally approved in nineteen ninety-eight, and they're updated, but to date, we have received no former master plan application from them. Hopefully, we'll know more, as Dave mentioned, next week in our discussions with them and what their plan is to move forward with the hospital.
I would also point out that the plan itself, we wish to be comprehensive and to take into account all facilities on the property. Oftentimes, they don't do that. I know there's been some discussion at DSHS about expanding the Oak Ridge community facility on the corner of Silicon Boulevard and Eighty-third. The house is approximately twenty-five to twenty-eight youths. They've been talking about doubling that. If they're going to be doubling that, then we want to see this as a comprehensive look, not just piecemeal from use type to use type, from one side of the property to the other. So that's part of our discussion on August twenty-first.
And then, under most recent plan, that just talks a little bit about the current situation and the status. The hospital is, when it first was built, obviously was a very rural area, and it's very different now. And then, page one oh-six, there is the map of what, the most current map that they provided us with. We will get something more updated in our next meeting. Then we've just begun to touch on redevelopment potential. Should there be an opportunity for part or redevelopment or all redevelopment of the land? Two-hundred-and-sixteen acres is pretty significant, and there'd be lots of opportunity there, including expansion of the park, mix of commercial office, residential housing, perhaps extension of Pierce College, sports complexes, and so forth. The chart there was just given as an example of if there were to be housing implemented there, the number of units that could be seen on the property. And one example or one option for zoning could be an extension of neighborhood commercial in the front with housing behind. And then finally, on page one oh-seven, we would absolutely want to see if there were redevelopment, form-based code development for that area to allow for additional uses that would fit with the community and region at the time the land becomes available, should that occur. And the next steps, obtain feedback from the council and research and provide additional information. As requested, we'll be meeting with Western State Hospital, DSHS, and evaluate the local positive and negative impacts of the hospital, and determine the direction of DSHS for the property.
So the council is aware of this? DSHS is supposed to be doing their own economic impact of the hospital upon the Lakewood community, and that should be forthcoming at some point.
Do we have any basic information about the work schedules of the people who work there?
No.
Like, anybody, it doesn't appear that they leave campus during the day.
I do see some people leaving campus to go to the little sandwich shop down the street. I do see in the morning hours, the employees coming and going on shift changes around five, six AM at Albertson's, but I don't have any specific information. Also, too, the hospital administrator is supposed to be coming to the city council to make a presentation at some point in the near future, Mr. Holt. I think if the council would request that information, he would provide it.
Warning, but that was a terminable offense the last time it happened.
Any other questions? That would, that's it?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to start off with turning it over to Tiffany Spear, our Planning Manager for Special Projects. She'd like to give in review with you a draft letter that would come from PCRC to the Puget Sound Regional Council regarding Vision two thousand fifty. And I think we emailed it out to you last week. I don't know if you have hard copies for them, but this will be reviewed, this will be reviewed at the next PCRC meeting, which I know the deputy mayor and council member Bokey and council member Simpson are a part of. In addition, we are also working on our own letter that we would like to share with you later this month or early September. But with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Spear to talk about PCRC's letter.
Thank you, Manager. So Tiffany Spear with Special Projects for Community and Economic Development. We had a study session, I can't remember how long ago now, but during the period of time that the Puget Sound Regional Council was taking comment on the SEIS, the Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement, for Vision two thousand fifty. Fast forward to now, we're in the public comment period for the actual draft plan. And rather than how it was done last time around with the EIS, where all of the local jurisdictions developed their own comment letters and submitted them individually, the Pierce County Regional Council is now going to hold a session in August specifically on Vision two thousand fifty, and to consider a letter that, as many of the jurisdictions are willing and able to agree to what's included, would be sending a joint letter, and then any other individual letters could be submitted, of course, as desired. The comment period goes through September sixteenth, so there's some time for the various cities in the county to develop their own letters, but this, timing-wise, had to happen pretty quickly for PCRC. So the draft letter, and I apologize for not having hard copies tonight for you, is several pages long, and the idea behind it, per PCRC direction, was to have themes or requests that were of common interest to all of the jurisdictions within the county. So very briefly, dealing with the jobs-housing balance that Vision two thousand forty right now was intended to improve, meaning not all the jobs in one place and all the housing in somewhere else. Fast forward from when two thousand forty was adopted to today, that's exactly what has happened, and exacerbated transportation problems, housing affordability problems, et cetera. So the point that's being voiced in this letter reflects some comments that were already submitted by Derek Young from the county council, namely that the trend of having housing provided in particularly Pearson's and Homish County for jobs happening in King County cannot continue. What that does is cause problems for all three counties and people trying to work and live in any one of them. So rather than just talking about, we need to continue to have jobs happen without any specificity of where, pushing for the idea that they need to happen where the houses already are, thereby reducing continued congestion, helping with housing affordability, meaning you can live and work in the same area. So that's the biggest issue that's proposed in this joint letter. There's several others. One is regional collaboration. Another is dealing with the unfunded mandates that Vision two thousand fifty suggests. There's a number of different things that just assume cities in particular are going to start to do without contemplating any way to fund it. There's also the recognition of military installations now, JBLM in particular, but there's not enough in the opinion proposed in this letter teeth behind that, meaning there needs to be more voiced about how regional planning should take the fact that that base, as well as the Bremerton bases, are in the area, and how they affect transportation, how they affect services that are needed for service members and their families off-base, that sort of thing. And then there's also discussions about how to move forward with climate change, how to move forward with regional housing issues that may be of concern for a number of jurisdictions. So this letter will be in front of everyone for the PCRC as their agenda is sent out this Thursday, so people will have about a week to review it. And then next Thursday evening, the fifteenth, there will be extended conversation about Vision two thousand forty, or fifty, excuse me, and then this letter in particular. The fifteenth, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I was thinking it was last week. My apologies. It was sent out then, I'm sorry. Yes, it was. It came out with your agenda. So first and foremost, to the city council members that would be involved this Thursday evening, if you have any questions, Mr. Brewer and myself are available to answer those for you offline. Otherwise, the thought tonight would be, Mr. Mayor, maybe direction informal, that whoever is there Thursday night on behalf of Lakewood has the ability to say yes, the city would support it, or no, whatever the decision would be. I believe so, given what I know to be Lakewood's concerns. Certainly, they go beyond what this letter includes, but as far as a common theme, these are things that Lakewood can agree to, yes. And then assuming that we're to go forward, just very quickly, we are in the beginning stages of putting together a Lakewood-specific letter, which will come before you before it were to be submitted, and that will be, again, delivered to you within the next couple of weeks in time for review and consideration before the comment deadline on September sixteenth.
I don't have any, personally don't have any disagreement with the themes in general. I mean, you led off with the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, not to be confused with monkeys, which are the... It seems that everything that PSRC does tends to exacerbate the transportation problems instead of relieve it. A cynic would think that that's because people in King County want the tax money spent on social programs, and we're a low-cost housing area, but you'd be a cynic if you thought that. Anybody else does? Pardon? Pardon? Mr. Coffield? Thank you, Ms. Spear.
If you get a chance, you might want to check your email. Lieutenant Waller sent out a notice regarding an incident that occurred about six o'clock this afternoon. Apparently, it appears a five-year-old boy may have been abducted from the Oak Brook School area, thirteen-year-old girl witnessed something very, very suspicious. The kid was picked up or dragged into a, looked like some kind of a RV... The kid was picked up or dragged into a, looked like some kind of a RV of some sort. They got a picture of it, they don't have a license plate. So right now, PD is out there trying to figure out what's going on and get to the bottom of that. So just to give you a courtesy heads-up. What I heard in the back there was that you would like us to bring forward a resolution regarding House Bill 1406, so we can have that in front of you for your review as part of your next study session on August 26th, and then if you're so inclined, you could take action in early September. So it's a very straightforward item to bring forward, and then there'll be follow-up items to do at a later date. I think you also might be aware that Lakewood Police Department is conducting some speed emphasis, about 10 locations here citywide for the month of August, and no quarter shall be given and no quarter shall be asked if you get pulled over, so just a fair warning.
They're on Nyanso pretty regularly.
That's one of the 10.
The first mile on my way to work.
By the way, the 10 roadways that Lieutenant Gilda House and his team selected were based on, you know, a number of factors, including citizen complaints and actually, you know, history of speeding on those corridors.
Other roadways?
It's 10 of them, yes. Ms. Spear is going to be attending a mayoral roundtable on housing affordability. It's actually, kind of came out of the, I wasn't aware of it until late last week. It's on this Wednesday, August 14th, down in Pualup, and I believe it's being hosted by Mayor Wood, it's with the City of Tacoma. So Ms. Spear will be going. One of the messages, you know, that we've had, that I've been communicating out there is, when we talk about housing affordability, you know, the fact is, is that Lakewood has, you know, 60, 65, 67% of our housing is low and low-income, and if not for Lakewood, where would we be? So, you know, it'd be nice if other folks could step up to the plate as well. Last week, Representative Kilduff was here, and she mentioned she's seeking a formal attorney general opinion regarding less restrictive alternatives in the placement of individuals, particularly into adult family homes. And really, her ask is focused on two things. One is who can be placed, or maybe who should not be placed, in adult family homes, as well as the issue of not so much density, but dispersal and the location of them. It'll probably take about six to eight months for the formal opinion to make its way through the process. But again, her purpose there is to try and get an understanding, okay, is what DSHS doing commensurate with state law? And if it is, okay, fine, then she knows, in working with her colleagues, on what legislative solutions need to be introduced to rectify that, based on what the legislator's intent was a number of years ago. And then if it's not, well, then DSHS has some explaining to do and some changes that they need to make. As a part of the formal opinion request, there is an opportunity for public feedback and public input, and so our legal department is in the process of putting together, you know, our thoughts on this issue, which I know you are all very, very familiar with. So we'll be moving forward with that. The Port of Tacoma has a new executive director, Eric Johnson, so he has reached out to us, actually, so I'm going to be meeting with him here in the near future. They view, once again, Lakewood is a very, very good and strong partner with them. One of the items that we're going to be discussing is they're in the process of updating their strategic plan, and so they want to get our feedback and input, particularly given all the development and investment that's occurring in our community regarding, you know, light industrial and manufacturing, some of the things that you heard a little bit ago. They also wished, actually specifically from commissioners, Petrich and McCarthy, wanted to express the thanks to this body for agreeing to be part of the City of Tacoma's, the committee that they put together, the task force regarding their sub-area plan. And so we did communicate that Councilmember Branstadter will be the primary, and then Ms. Spear will be the alternative. So those two commissioners in particular wished us to pass that along to you.
Years ago, we had a joint meeting between the four commissioners and our body.
Two years ago. It's two years ago.
Even before that, we had one with the Brook Brook Industrial Plant when it first came out.
Oh, that was even way back, yeah.
Way back, yeah.
That was before my time.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah, I'm going to bring that up, yeah, once they get a, kind of a new body in place. It'll probably take a year or two, or we'll see, but yeah, that's on my agenda to talk with them about. We have two vacancies, the traffic signal maintenance workers that we have, so they have, one moved on several months ago, and then our second one decided to take a job in Seattle last week. So effective August 21st, where we don't have those two positions are filled. We were in the process of doing some interviews to fill the first one, and certainly, you know, if there was two qualified candidates, we could hire two. However, I put a pause on that, and we have reached back out to Pierce County, and beginning August 21st, they're going to provide traffic signal services for us under an existing contract that we have for times immaterial. And then on a parallel track, we're going to look at maybe creating some kind of a pilot program where we contract with them for six or 12 months, or something along those lines, to get a better handle on what it would take to contract with them permanently. I would prefer to contract with the county, given their breadth of experience and resources that they have, rather than just having two people. It's just more efficient, certainly from a workload standpoint, so it's really just a matter of making the money work, and so...
How do you even just if you do that, if someone posts themselves here, you just bring it over and stuff?
Just when we have a light out, just how we do it now.
Not the guys who are up there manipulating the...
No, it is, it's the traffic signals, yeah. But a lot of, most of our traffic signals are new, so we don't have a lot of problems or a lot of issues. So it's a fairly straightforward service. It's not, yeah, so... The youth council, you would ask to do a meet and greet, and so we've scheduled that for October 7th. Their first meeting, for them to get together and know themselves, in September, so we've scheduled it 6:30 in advance of one of your regular meetings, October 7th, a little bit of a, again, a meet and greet with your youth council. We've also, process of elimination, looks like Saturday, September 28th works well for everybody for a council retreat, so we'll go ahead and move forward with that unless there's any objection. So if you haven't been over in the Springbrook neighborhood, 123rd opened up this late last week. Motor Ave was supposed to have a soft opening late last week, but that did not occur, so I don't know if it occurred earlier today, but certainly by sometime this week, that roadway will be open as well. Pierce Transit is doing some modifications to their bylaws, and so our legal department's taken a look at it, making sure that we're okay with them. Just a real cursory look at them, they appear to be pretty much just general housekeeping updates, so, okay, thanks, Mayor.
I'm on the committee that passed on that.
Oh, okay, yeah, so...
There's a requirement that every city within the PTBA receive notice that you're changing your bylaws.
Wanted to let you know, at least we're, you know, we're reviewing it, so again...
Either the notice got here...
If we see anything that's out of the ordinary, we'll let you know. If you don't hear back from us, we're good. And then, yeah, so August, just a couple more concerts in the park, and then on to September, so that's my report, Mayor.
Questions for the city manager? Well, thank you much.
One final comment, so we're going to try and, your study sessions, keep it down to about four items. I overextended this evening, so I apologize for that with a fifth item.
Yeah, we almost had an hour on franchise transfer, which is a consent agenda item. Council comments, Mr. Branstadter. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, I'm really brief, but tonight I have some exciting news to share, so if you will bear with me for a few minutes. And I did make some notes, so I will read from my notes, so I don't go for an hour. I'm only going to go a half an hour, Mr. Simpson.
You'll be talking to the walls.
I often tell my, give my information, and I give it to you as if I know you know all the details of it. I go straight to them, and tonight I thought I'd take a little bit of time and explain it to you. As you all know, I have been working on implementing the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition for the City of Lakewood and the Puget Sounds since 2016. We ran into some roadblocks and detours along the way. We were able to work around them. We wanted to join, under the umbrella of an existing 501(c)(3) organization, which took several months before we found out that that was not going to happen. So then in October 2018, we decided to become our own 501(c)(3), which was granted January 2019. And the reason we wanted to do that was so we could raise money to do some of the things that we wanted to do. As we proceeded, we learned that the logo that we had had a patent on it, so we had to go back to the drawing board. And we have our own logo that I want to share with you guys, and I hope you will be as excited about it as I am. The oak leaves was a suggestion by Mr. Branstadter, because all we gave to our, all we gave to the person that was going to develop the logo was that we wanted it to be something that would relate to Lakewood. And so when Mike said it has to be the oak leaves, then she came up with the, instead of the tree, she came up with the hands, which was very impressive. I'm going to pass this around, because there's information on the back I wanted to share with you. Our choice of income was from the city and from our membership and our board members. And if you look on the back of the flyer, you'll see that we were not going to go very far, very fast with those, because currently we have, like, possibly five board members and one member. So our income was lacking quite a bit. But through networking and attending various meetings where I had an opportunity to talk about LMCC, I realized that there was a lot of interest that were interested in closing the gap between our cultures. I learned that there are a number of organizations that are working on the type, this same type of program that, with their staff. So I decided to seek financial support from organizations in the community that expressed an interest. I met with the CEO at Harborstone Credit Union on Thursday and learned that they, too, are working on implementing the same type of program with their staff. And he felt that this would be a good opportunity for us to work together. It would be a lot more we could accomplish. Actually, his comments were, "We can't change what's happening in the world, but we can make a difference in our community." And I replied, and he asked, "How can Harborstone help LMCC?" I replied that I would like for Harborstone Credit Union to be our anchor sponsor, and I presented him with the grant request, hoping that they would give us at least $3,000. To my amazement and my surprise, Harborstone Credit Union came through as our anchor sponsor at $50,000.
You must know people.
I go to top, but it would be spread out over a five-year period. It's fantastic.
Wonderful.
So we can continue talking about the celebration that we want to have here in Lakewood, so you've got work to do. Yeah, the one thing that, the one thing that I wanted to share is that I have a meeting next week with the person that I'm going to be working with, and within the next month, we will have a check for $10,000 for this year.
Is that a budget, or is that you want to fund?
Actually, we wanted to, we have, our plans are to do workshops and to have one big celebration, you know? And so we were not, having not identified those, because we didn't have the funds, because if you look at the back of that, we were never going to get there with those funds. But so, but we wanted to, what we want to do, what I would like to see us, this group, that body do, is to find a family that is struggling and help with the students in education, help with, helping, provide some of the resources that the city has to offer that is not being taken advantage of, those kinds of things. That's what I, I just want to help people that are struggling.
Can I make a suggestion? I was at the Club of Parks School District Board meeting tonight to do our presentation, and they talk about, like Ms. Jacobs did last week, about the giving out of the backpacks and so on and so forth. And during her comments, she mentioned something about, and she referred to that poverty immersion scenario. You know, that might be a good place to start, because I think they could come up with a telephone list of families, given the number of students that are on the lunch and breakfast program, that would be good contact. And I can't help but think that it would strengthen relationships between us and them.
Well, I can share with you that the new superintendent is on my board. So we have that connection, and he has been really great with us for the summer fest. We will be at Farmer's Market on the 27th, and hopefully we have our new logo so that we won't get in trouble. We were told that we could use this limited, we could have a limited use of this logo at a cost. Yes, so we decided that we didn't want to do that. We developed our own, and I hope you guys will accept it.
Has this thing been...
It's been patented.
It really was. Trademarked, I mean. The one with hands.
Yes, the big one that I just gave you with the leaves, that's, the artist has the patent, and she's holding that for LMCC. And the way that got, there was a recommendation came to me from Club of Parks Technical College, and I met with her. She solicited her granddaughter, so this is a student that did this. Unfortunately, she's in, well, not unfortunately, but she's not in Washington, she's in Arizona, that developed that, so. We're, I'm excited, I've been bursting at the seams all week. But, thank you, guys.
I'm going to have to read my, any numbers. Exactly. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I seem to have lost my stick, and I've lost my rock, so I'm going to go home now. That's my way of saying I have no comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Barth? Mr. Boakier?
We're lopsided here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one thing. I went to the Senior Center BBQ and really enjoyed it. Big crowd, the city manager was there and our staff, and it was very nicely done, and yeah, a lot of folks, so very enjoyable. Oh, you?
National Night Out was awesome, so thank you for everyone that helped put it on. It was really terrific, and I think the, I think the community really enjoyed it.
Mr. Whalen?
Oh, just a couple of brief things. I did the Poverty Inversion Workshop, for the most part, last week. I stayed through as much as I could of it. It was, you know, a decent event. I think it was well-attended, mostly by school district personnel, administrators, and a few community people, so, you know, a lot of bad event. Met with the director of EFN the next day, and she is new, basically, to Lakewood. She's running what Helen certainly put a lot of effort into, and she's doing a great job. She's very excited to be a part of Lakewood, asked for connections to Mary God's work, the lady anger, and Jeff Cummins, and just so she can get educated about all things Lakewood, so she may reach out to one or more of them. The concert in the park this Thursday is a gentleman that I solicited, and I'm just thankful that they were able to contract for. His name is Justin Young. He's an incredible musician. He plays saxophone, he's got a band. He plays at the wineries in Shalan and Woodville, and he's a Boeing engineer by trade. and he's a Boeing engineer by trade, works for a different company now, but he's got a master's in engineering, and he's doing this on the side, and this has become his passion. He's fantastic, so if you get a chance to enjoy the concert, you know, if you have men in one, this is a good one to go to, he's top-notch. I'm going to hopefully get out of PCRC at seven, so we can go to that, at least get to part of it, so. The only other thing is, you know, we've had some funky crime things in the last few days, and I have to say, stuff happens, I'm sure, in every community, it's just unfortunate and it's frustrating, so, you know, I just hope we can reverse, continue the good work we have done to reverse the perception, and stuff like this doesn't help. It's not anyone's fault, except the criminals, but you have to work on some, yeah.
Ms. Barth?
A follow-up, I did see something come across my phone, it said that they found the trailer on JBLM property, and they're investigating now, so, for the boy. Yes, that too.
Something else, you know, this kind of stuff, unbelievable. I would note that the LPDs could be commended with a brutal attack in Lake City, they had the people within about fifteen minutes. I mean, when you think of that as an effective response, it's all you could ask for. Mr. Simpson reminded me that there was a bar bill from a multicultural event when we were, and he, the bar bill did come in, it was $140, and so he overpaid me by twenty. But, but a $20 contribution would be appreciated. The Neighborhood Night Out was a great success. Jeez, no. Jeez, who carries $100 bills? You know, we're, I'm of an age where carrying a big wad of cash was a status symbol, and now it's a sign that you don't have a credit rating. Yeah, let's see, twenty, forty, sixty. Actually do. Now, what do I do with the $100 bill? I use dollar, $1 bills, let's see. Sixty, there's eighty. Thank you. Neighborhood Night Out was a great success, I think I hit six or seven. It's all above board, literally. Neighborhood Night Out was a great success, went to a six or seven locations with Chief Zarro, whose is this? Okay, thank you, this is mine, okay. This was out of... Council out-of-pocket expense, yeah, non-reversed by the city. Seventh Infantry Division Commanding General is changing out tomorrow morning, I will attend after I have fun at Coffee with the Mayor, this is going to be Chief Zarro, been seeing a lot of him lately, so I'm out directing traffic on Friday, let's talk about strange things happening in Lakewood, come out of Rotary, go to the freeway, and on the Gravelly Lake overpass, there is one half of a double-wide home, it's shrink-wrapped, sitting perfectly in the westbound lane. Nice and clean, but it just slid off the trailer and boom, flat, perfectly in one lane. Put the Marine Bar sign right on the side, said "Half Off," literally. The American Lake weed board, we had the list of folks, if anybody has last chance to give me input on, because we're going to have to appoint some folks here. Mill Foil. It's a three-person board, and we got like eight people, Mark is one of the applicants. I intend to appoint him if left to my own devices. No, they, we have, like, I didn't think you applied, there were about eight or ten applicants for the, for the three spots. So take a look at those real quick, give me feedback by tomorrow, we need to get that going, because they're... Pardon? The clerk will resend the list, correct? Okay, just shoot it back to me individually. And that's all I have. Give me the hour, we're adjourned. What we got here?